Mr. Chairman, we're live.
Hey, welcome everybody in the audience and online. Today is Monday, July 31st. This is our weekly county commissioner meeting. I'll call the meeting order. At this time, I please ask everyone to rise and follow me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. Everybody get a chance to look at the agenda. If there's no changes or additions, I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda. I make a motion to approve the agenda. Sherry, oh, you're there. Okay. They moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. We'll get right on into our agenda. These are all action items. The meeting minutes are July 17th and July 24th.
Make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes, July 17th and July 24th, 2023.
Mr. Chairman, since I wasn't there on the 24th, I will abstain from that vote.
Okay, well, I will second the motion. And I don't know if I could find it, but there was one. I don't know if I let you know, Doug, but I think you had me making a motion and seconding.
If it was on the 17th one, Mr. Chairman, I did correct that.
Okay, okay.
That's the one where I was, I missed. One of the meetings.
And that was B O E. Oh, no, you were down in Utah or somewhere.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That might have been the B O E.
Okay, so I have a motion to second approved July 17th and July 24th. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. Doug, do I need to go into B O E to approve the minutes?
I don't feel that you do, Mr. Chairman. You can just approve the meeting minutes as the Board of Commissioners.
Okay, so then our next agenda item is the B O E meeting minutes of June 29th and July 5th. All those in favor? I need a motion to approve.
Yeah, go ahead, Chair, because I missed one.
I would, I would move to approve the motion minutes for the B O E.
Second.
See, the one on July 5th is when we did all the in-person ones. Okay, we got a motion to second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Okay, our next agenda item is an action item. This is a cancellation of market value. Madam Assessor, I'll turn it over to you.
Good morning. This is cancellation number one for 2023 for Brianna and Ian Hatterly. Parcel number RP 12 North, 04 East, 042200. Noreen had an in-office interview with the property owner prior to April 15th confirming their ag use, and she incorrectly removed the exemption. So we are just asking you to cancel 75,448 in value for their ag exemption.
Right, for the ag exemption?
Right. She accidentally took their ag exemption away, even though they submitted all their paperwork and documentation. It was just done in error.
So category two is ag, right?
Ag, yes.
It doesn't say how many acres it is.
Ah, no.
Must be a lot of acres to lose that much value.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna make, oh, go ahead.
I would make a motion that we approve the cancellation, number one, for Hatterly.
Second.
Who does second? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries.
Y'all healed up? Is it hard to laugh?
7:31?
Yeah.
Are you? I broke two ribs playing softball one time.
Thank you.
It's one thing I realized I couldn't do it. I couldn't laugh. It just hurt.
Who has broken ribs?
Joe Hatta.
Somebody who wants to ride motorcycles.
Our mountain rider.
Okay, we're gonna move on down. Our next agenda item is an action item. This is approval of reinvestment of the ARPA dollars.
Yep. So I have two action items for you this morning, Commissioners. First of all, we had another ARPA tranche mature this morning. We originally invested $996,365.47, and today we received 1,015,000, 1,015,634.38. So I've made quite the, quite the return on that investment. And I'm coming before you today to request the reinvestment of that unless you would like me to hold it out for spending. And just as a reminder, we have approximately a million dollars maturing every 30 days. So we will have on August 31st another, this one's actually smaller because we, we held some of it out. So this one will be about 800, just over 800,000, maturing on August 31st.
Almost every 30 days, we have a million dollars occurring?
Maturing, yes. So we've, the investment schedule that we did for the ARPA dollars has a million dollars maturing every 30 days. So we have the liquidity to be able to spend it if necessary. The other thing that I would like to update you on is that the clerk has submitted the request for the second tranche of the lactva funds. And we're not exactly sure when those will be received, but as soon as they do, we, I'll come before you and ask to use the same investment strategy to invest that additional 3.2 million.
And that was what, another 2.3?
3.2.
3.2. Ooh, dyslexic today.
That's, and that's ARPA? Or what is it?
It's lactva, which is local agents, local assistance.
Tribal.
Tribal, no, local.
You're with me.
Mr.
Where's that come from?
Comes from the federal government. It's related to the COVID relief funds, but this one has to do with tribal lands. And the clerk will give you the acronym for it.
Neil, this came out of, it's, the SRS counties received an extra tranche of funds because of the heavy hit during the pandemic. So these are the funds that we actually went back and lobbied for. The government was going to just give every county a little bit, and we went back and fought, you know, because of the SRS funding. Just anybody that had forested grounds took an extra heavy hit during the pandemic. And so these are all funds that came from that tranche.
It's Local Assistance and Tribal Consistency Fund is the title.
And Sherry, do you know, is there a restriction or is there a timeframe on when we have to spend these?
So the timeframe is the only thing I need to check on. There is no restrictions on these funds. The 2.2 million that we started with, we do have to identify this next year for certain and spend by '26. I want to double check on the timing of these.
I don't think there was on these. I don't remember, but we've already got a lot of that. This first round already designated, right, with the trust and.
But that's, isn't that ARPA?
That was ARPA.
This is, it's essentially the same as ARPA, except for the ARPA money has restrictions and a timeline wrapped around it. And the lactva funds, as far as we know, do not. We have reporting requirements for all of this spending, but as far as I know, there's been no timelines established for when it needs to be.
Okay, and I think we're really smart in investing and making some interest on it because that's gonna help long-term. What is the interest rate now on your CDs? Are you over 5%?
Right. So this morning, I had our investment banker send me some options for investments, and he sent me three of them. So the highest maturity rate, or excuse me, yield rate is 5.251. I'm just looking at the different options here. Some, some of these have accrued interest already. So it ranges from 5.15 to 5.25 in, in interest on.
They just raised that last Wednesday, and I think we just got 5.5 on some of ours.
Oh, really? So the.
But that's private. This is government, a little different.
The Fed rate at the last meeting, they didn't raise it. They kept it the same. And so the interest rate has kind of hovered right above 5%.
I thought they raised it a quarter. And then they said they were gonna raise them again, starting the first week in August, looking at it again.
Potentially. I am not sure when the next Fed meeting is. I'll have to look at my calendar.
But with that being stated, I'm gonna go ahead and make the motion that we reinvest the ARPA dollars as seen fit by our matronly treasurer.
I'll second that.
The only, El, the only discussion item, I anticipate that that million dollars will be needed by the trust starting in September to pay bills. So I, I think that, you know, this is great, and I think that we should have the other funding coming in right away anyway, so we should be good to go, but.
Well, we still gotta find designation for the other 1.2, correct?
The other 3 points.
From the original, the very first.
Oh, yes, yes.
So we need to sit down, and I think we could do that with our RFQ on the road department if we decide to use that for that or.
So as of the end of June, which is the last month in close that we've processed, we've only spent $48,000 of the ARPA.
We do have a million dollars committed, though, to the housing trust. I will remind the Commissioners, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
So we need to.
We also have a committed of 250 on the fairgrounds.
250,000?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So then we're still, we're still short about almost 900,000. We've gotta get committed here pretty quick.
Yeah.
Maybe we should, we could give the Commissioners a salary.
You're gonna have one request this afternoon, so. You got one request coming in later today, and I think we do need to put something on an agenda fairly quickly. You know, people are, are wondering what's gonna happen with these. We need a greater conversation, but maybe that needs to be in September sometime.
I, I'll also.
When we get our RFP back.
I'll also remind you, in the CIP process, some of the CIP projects had requested funding out of ARPA. I don't know, we had put it in, up for discussion whether it was gonna be funded by Pilt or ARPA. And so some of that could be decided in the budget process.
And you're gonna send me that list again because I deleted it.
I can do that.
You write yourself a note, please. And so we got a motion to second to reinvest the ARPA dollars. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next one is another action item is tax cancellation 2305, and that's in your packet.
Yes, so this is tax cancellation 2305 for Matthew Gronick, parcel number RP 00500000120. And this was kind of an interesting item that the assessor's office brought up. So in the 2022 assessment notices, so the assessment notices that went out last summer, the value on Mr. Gronick's property was stated at one amount, which I could tell you. It was, the value for the improvements on his property was $789,842. And then at some point between then and when the tax bills created, the value on this property changed. It went up to $797,036. We looked through the history. We cannot figure out how it happened or what happened. It seems to be potentially just a glitch. So Mr. Gronick noticed this when he went to pay the second half of taxes, noticed that the value had changed and called it and brought it to our attention. So at this point, we can't do a market value cancellation because taxes have already been billed. So the assessor's office asked if I would present to you a cancellation of taxes request. The difference in the value only amounted to an $18.97 tax cancellation, and so that is what I am bringing before you today.
Everybody understand this and good with this? I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to, uh, I can get my fancy computer to work. There we go. To what? We are cancellation, the tax cancellation.
Of 2305.
23-05.
I'll second.
Moved in second. And all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries.
I'm getting better on this computer, Sherry.
I'm so proud of you. I'm gonna give you a certificate of award.
Yeah, they did that to our softball team once. They, they gave us a trophy just for showing up because we lost every game that year.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks. Have a great day.
Thank you, ladies.
Yeah, our next agenda item is for the next two hours. This is a budget workshop for fiscal year '24. Doug has sent us a lot of that. So what I'm gonna do is just kind of turn it over to him, and we'll go from there.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I think what will begin on, if the Commissioners don't mind, is the proposed pay raises, pay increases, and pay changes that have been prepared by our HR director, prior HR director Pat Duncan. And Mike Savoy has also provided some input in regarding the proposed pay changes for fiscal year 2024. If you can give me just a moment, I will put those on the screen.
Mike, did you send those to us?
I did, Mr. Chairman.
So they're part of the packet?
Yeah.
Budget workshop. I'm assuming we got levy.
Check that one.
Oops.
Oh, check that one.
There we go.
So, Mike, I'm looking at it. It's a 2% increase overall is what you guys are recommending.
Mr. Mopin, it's actually a 6% increase. That tab that you're seeing is, is not reflecting accurately, but if you look right underneath that, there's, it's in black, it says 1.06. That's actually the proposed salary increase. For some reason, the formula was showing 1.02, which is incorrect.
Interesting. So at that, at the 6%, because the 2% balanced in the levy rate, so the 6% still balances. That's.
Mr. Mopin, that is correct. And there are some positions with a larger increase, and I'll let Human Resource Director Mike Savoy present on those positions that had a, an increase based on the studies, analysis that was conducted by the HR department. If you can give me just one second, Mr. Chairman.
Mm-hmm. Mike, where were most of the changes you made in upper level or mid-level or?
Actually, Commissioner, we, we looked at all positions across the board. Basically, we wanted to move the overall pay structure uphill by a minimum of 4%. And then on top of that, give everybody another minimum 2% so that we don't get a compression issue within pay ranges. However, beyond that, we did take a look at other specific areas of significant need and said we needed to adjust the entry levels for those positions. An example would be our road technicians. Instead of moving them uphill by 4%, we moved them up by 10%. And so you'll see your road technicians received a 12% increase instead of a 6% increase. Again, the 10% to move the structure uphill, a significant amount because of recruiting and retention issues we have in that department. But again, another 2% to help with compression within that area.
So I'm assuming then our base rate starting road tech is 2360?
Right now, it's 2084.
I don't see any at that level. Oh, there's a 1608. Maybe I'm on the wrong tab.
It might be. There's a specific tab for roads.
You have road department, annual raise.
Yeah, and you'll see some of our entries in there at the current rate, showing their current rate at 2084.
I don't see any at 20. Oh, there's a 2084. 2084, okay.
With a correct wage now showing of 2288.
2288.
That's what we want to move the structure up to.
The purple is our, is the one I wanna look at.
Yes, sir.
So now the base rate is 2288.
And then we also, for those existing staff, tack on an additional 2%, which will then be your new rate in orange to the right of that.
So then our base rate was gonna be coming in at 2334.
The base rate will now be, can I approach real quick?
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely, yeah. We can sit down at the table, too, if you guys want.
This is probably the spreadsheet you're looking at here.
Yeah.
So you're gonna have, say, somebody in here like.
See, there's a base salary there.
That's what we're paying new people right now. We wanna move the structure up to here. But if we would have had an existing person in that spot to avoid them being compressed with a brand-new person coming in here, we bumped them an additional 2 to get them up to there.
But the base salary is now 2280.
2288 is the base salary for a road technician.
We were talking about that at the Road Advisory Committee, and that's one of the issues. We gotta pay more.
Absolutely.
To grab more help.
Absolutely.
Okay.
That's what I have to do in my outfit.
I know.
Other areas we took a strong look at is in our jail, in our detention facility.
Okay.
We have.
Sheriff?
It's under the, the first tab.
First tab?
Annual.
Oops, jail, jail.
Scroll down. It looks like it's line 10, 122.
Yeah, you'll see sheriff's department, and then below that, you're gonna see a jail department as well.
So that base there is 2489? And you bump that up to 2539. Is that correct?
Actually, our base right now is 2125 for a recruit. And we wanna bump that recruit rate up. What we wanna do here, Commissioner, is we wanna recognize that in the sheriff's office, whether we're looking at a detention deputy or a patrol deputy, that we recognize the quality of value in those two jobs. And this is, I think, going to be an enormous benefit to this department with regards to being able to recruit as well as retain existing staff. If you stop and think, and you guys know this better than I do, when we start thinking about who do we absolutely have to have, what absolute basic services does this county have to provide, that jail has to be number one. I mean, we don't have the option of saying, well, guys, just behave yourself today. We're gonna be off, we're gonna be a little short-staffed. When they're short-staffed, they pull patrol deputies in, and not all patrol deputies are certified or able to work detention. That is, there is a specific skill set and training that they have to have. We've also seen, unfortunately, as is going to be the case amongst a lot of counties, this notion that, well, if you wanna get into law enforcement, you wanna be out driving in the patrol car, you gotta start off in the jail. You do that for a few years, and then we'll eventually pull you into patrol. And it means we see significant turnover in the detention facility at all times. We never get a real, we've got some great people that have been over there for years that say, this is all I want. But at the same time, we see significantly more turnover in detention than we do in patrol.
Because they don't wanna wait to get.
They don't wanna wait. And, but if we can get us, establish it to where we can go and tell a young person, look, you get into detention, we recognize your value. Yes, when they're out on the roads, and no negative reflection on our patrol deputies. They've got a job that is thankless beyond words. But our detention deputies, whether they're on a 12-hour, 8-hour, 10-hour day, they are facing a dangerous situation every minute of the day in that job.
And what is it, Mike? Two years when you can promote out of the jail?
Typically, two to three.
Two to three.
Is what we're looking at. And we see that kind of that, hey, I'm just a jailer right now, and eventually I'm gonna be in patrol. And I know Mike La Croix over there has done incredible work to try to change that attitude, and I've spoken to Sheriff Capery as well. And his attitude is he does not wanna hear anybody say, I'm just a jailer. And so to be able to go and say, if you're in our jail or you're in a patrol car, you are of equal value to this county. And so we wanted to increase the starting wages amongst the jail detention facility to reflect that of patrol.
So we went from 2125 to 2489. Let me know if I'm wrong here, but we're gonna end up settling on 2539 is the base.
For an existing staff member to be able to avoid compression again. So, yes, we're going.
So the base salary then is 2489?
Yes, sir.
That's what I'm looking.
Yes, sir.
And what did we do in patrol?
Patrol, we did our standard 6%, but we also did do some work in there. And I'm, I'm not sure if this was done this year or has been in the past. I think it has been in the past where we will, we've got three different levels of patrol. We have three different levels of corporal to try to, again, create that career ladder. But in the patrol, or in our, yeah, in our patrol, we basically went with a 6% increase there.
So that base salary is now 2914? For a new hire patrol one, that would be 2914?
I'm seeing it at 2548.
I'm not seeing. Yeah, but you're raising it from 2548.
2744 is what I'm seeing.
27, yeah, you're right. There it is, 2744. Okay.
And then we're, of course, adjusting our detention staff accordingly to try to make them, their pay reflective of that. Pretty healthy change.
How about any other departments?
So we do have a few one-offs here. The next biggest one that you're gonna see is amongst our probation officers. So if we can go take a look at Skip's group.
Mr. Chairman, that's on line 167.
Okay, and.
What we're not, we're not.
Before I forget to ask, so in the 911, it looked like we had quite of a large adjustment there also. Did that stand out to me, knowing that it's 6% now? Did you do anything special in there?
One moment.
You're talking about communication?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, we can go back to that. That's fine. We were just in the jail stuff, so.
So we went, in communication, our base is 1938. And I'm assuming that's gonna go to 2056, or 2016?
2016. We did not, quite honestly, Commissioner Mopin, I don't, we did not do anything in that group other than a standard 4% increase in structure uphill. Considering the challenge that I've got right now with recruiting for that, I would definitely like to see an increase there. However, I don't wanna do it in a vacuum. I do wanna take a look. I wanna get with the sheriff's office on something like that, make sure that we're not creating some sort of an inequity that I'm not aware of, but, but we also.
Give me a minute to catch up, Mike. There was one specific that jumped out at me, and I just, I need to find it really quick. Unfortunately, it's not as easy when I'm not there, but. So the supervisor position went up quite a bit.
It did.
From last year. And that's. So when you say it did, is that a special adjustment? Is that, why did that go up higher than the others?
Commissioner Mopin, I would, that is a special one-off jump. Also, you'll see that the lead, communications lead also had a pretty significant increase. The information I have is that it was done as an adjustment to bring those positions more in line with other sergeant positions within the sheriff's office.
Has there been a salary survey done with what's going on throughout the state with that?
I am not aware if Ms. Duncan did that before here. I know that was something that Pat put forward. I have not had a chance to take a look to see if that's consistent. But again, I think we're trying to make sure that our sergeants within the department overall, within the sheriff's office overall, overall are on par with one another.
See, the water wage is making a little over 38. What was that one?
I, I do believe that there's different responsibilities per sergeant that some may be a little bit more at risk than others. I, to me, that doesn't, that doesn't ring true to me. I'm sorry, but it does.
We can certainly take another look at that.
Well, years ago, when we couldn't recruit dispatchers, back then, I think it was like 17 bucks or something. And we had to contract with Adams County to help us for a while. You remember that? So that's why I decided we need to get that one up so we can keep our own help. So that's why I decided we needed to get that one up, so we can keep our own help.
And I agree with that a hundred percent, El, but we need to make sure that we're not overpaying certain positions to what's standard in the industry.
Oh, I know.
And just to say that we're balancing two sergeants within the department, you know? We, we've spent a lot of money in that department in the last few years. We just have gotta make sure that we're starting to level out, so that other positions within the county have the opportunity for increases too. And I just saw that one was a pretty big jump, so I just wanna make sure it's standard.
Yeah, if you look at some of the others, other sergeants in the sheriff's department, they've got hmm, almost two-dollar an hour raise. I'm a little more. I'm a little less.
Commissioners, I'll be happy to take a second look at that.
Um, what's another similar-rated position in the sheriff's office? Besides a sergeant? I don't know.
Yeah, we've got Sergeant Littrell, we've got Sergeant Knapp.
Yeah. I think we're pretty fair, actually. But I understand Sherry's comments too, we all pay taxes. Hey, what's another one?
The, probably the most important one I wanna draw to your attention, because it is the most significant, again, is under court services.
And that's for the supervisor position?
The, actually, the director position, we are just doing, uh, a standard six for Skip's position. But if you look at his staff below him, we're seeing significant increases. These are due to adjustments within the market for those positions. And in one case in specific, uh, for, uh, DeeDee Phillips, we're looking at years of experience, basically doing a catch-up for somebody who has, uh, for whatever reason, fallen pretty far behind the pay curve. And so you're gonna see some, I mean, some of those are twenty-plus percent increases in pay that you're seeing for Skip's, uh, team over there. And that is to basically say, this is what probation officers are making.
About a nine-dollar an hour increase for her.
I don't have a problem with that, cause you're, I mean, paying people for what they're worth? Yeah. But I'm all over that.
You know, we did, we've done a lot of salary surveys, but you have to real, keep in mind too that I think it's a little more expensive to live up here in other parts of the state.
Yes, sir, it is.
Anywhere else?
We have a number of small ones throughout, one-offs. We're talking, instead of a six percent raise, maybe an eight percent raise, maybe a ten percent raise. Uh, some of these are where people, a good example, we've got Brenda Gordon down in the DMV. She is running the show down there right now. She doesn't come into work, nobody gets any license issues. I mean, and we've got her scheduled to train, a new replacement coming onboard tomorrow. But her position is being bumped from a DMV clerk up to a DMV supervisor. That's going to come with a smaller increase, or a slightly larger increase than a standard six, but that's a change of pay, uh, pay position, job title. We have a few of the reevaluation folks in the assessor's office, same deal. They're going from like an assessor one to an assessor two, based on what's going on in that department. Another example?
Guys, there we go. You guys cut out for a minute. Mike, um, on the assessor, I noticed that it was substantially under what she needed last year. It's like she cut half a position. Did we have any position changes?
Mister Mopkin, we had five positions being paid, or five individuals being paid out of that department last year. But with the retirement of June Fulmer, that reduced the amount of individuals being paid out of that department to four.
Okay.
So you have the assessor, the chief deputy, and then the two plaque clerks.
And Doug, or Sherry, maybe you guys remember this, but we had a discussion here a while back about when someone retires, and then they wanna come back to work part-time. Do you guys remember? Did we put it at the salary range they left? Or at the, the salary range for that job?
I don't know where we've gone, Commissioner, uh, Hasbrook, with that in the past. What I can tell you is that typically, my approach would be to say, we're gonna reflect what experience you're bringing in the door. If, uh, if somebody was making a certain amount upon retirement, they wanna come back, and we're working them at that same level, pulling from that same knowledge base. Typically, I think it's most fair to try to bring them back at the rate of pay they were making before. If they're coming back at a part-time basis also, it's a cheap deal for us, because we don't pay benefits for that.
Right, right, right.
So there is a savings there.
But we've, we've set aside, like, for example, June's, we set fifteen thousand, and that's it. So that's just gonna be less hours for that money.
Where's Sue on here? I don't see her on the assessor.
No, it should be under assessor.
She's under the revaluation?
Actually, Sue?
She's under the assessor.
Yeah, sorry.
June is under fund twenty?
Yeah.
Sue down at the bottom?
Presidential praiser, two?
She's, her and Sue Probst both are part-time. Sue used to work. And there's quite a difference in that, sorry. That's why I brought it up, eighteen ninety, eighty-nine to thirty-one, thirty-two. But they're limited by the amount we can pay. We're just gonna get less hours, so to speak.
And Commissioners, on the budget worksheet for the revaluation, Assessor Leeper did indicate that they're going to be reducing the two part-time staff just to one part-time staff for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, just to share with the Commissioners.
And then we're doing, um, shoot, I just forgot his name, our commercial operator, Anthony on a contract, right?
Sue Leeper's not on here.
She is. Right now, we're budgeting for that out of salaries.
Hey, where's he in here?
He is currently, it says vacant.
He's the, he's the statistician?
She's on a different line.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, so that's the, yeah, I missed that piece. Okay.
So the vacant position is Anthony?
Correct, yes, sir.
There are three filed positions I do wanna bring to your attention. When you're ready.
Um, since we're that close to the solid waste, did you guys look at those two gals working in solid waste? That's not much of a bump there. That's not six percent, is it?
I think they're underfunded too, El.
Yeah, I think we need to look at those. They got a, would they get a seventy-cent raise? That's not right. I think we need to look at those two positions in solid waste.
They've been with us a long time to be making that much money.
Yeah.
And they're important to the county for the amount of income that comes in.
Is it six percent?
Yes, sir, it's six, but we'll definitely take a look. I'll make a note of that.
That's Nicole and...
Is it?
I think Nicole's the little blond-haired gal.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I saw her over the weekend twice. One to the don't.
See, I get a dollar seven on seventeen ninety. So that should be closer to nineteen bucks, I think. You figured seventeen ninety times six percent, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I got a dollar seven. Yeah, I think, let's look at those two again, Mike, when we get a chance. I don't, I think those are too low for both of those.
Be happy to take a look at them, for sure.
Okay, what was the other three you had?
So we have our three, uh, chief deputies, uh, positions for three of our elected officials. We've got Gabby, DeeDee in the assessor's office, and Casey in the treasurer's office. We took a look at those positions relative to other chief deputies throughout all counties in Idaho. We did not single out, select, cherry-pick, or anything like that. We looked at all the data that we've got from every county and what the, um, basically what those chief deputies are making in all the other counties. And we determined that our three in those positions are pretty significantly underpaid um, relative to Idaho as a whole, and relative to what the pay is of the elected official above them. And, uh, with Johanna's assistance in the treasurer's office, we came up with some different amounts for those three. Uh, again, those would be some pretty healthy bumps. But when we stop and think about what would happen if the elected official were to be, move on to greener pastures, be unelected, sorry, Doug, don't mean to suggest a possibility. But if that were to happen, quite honestly, if we stopped and thought, what would happen if we lost one of our elected officials in that job? The expectation is always gonna fall back upon the bureaucracy that we've got, the established people that are in there, the institutional knowledge that we have in those positions, and they become vital in that regard. And the chief deputy in those positions is, of course, expected to be able to act in the event of the complete absence of the elected official. We have with our other elected officials, we've got, uh, Captain Stamba over in the sheriff's office, who, there is very little daylight between his pay and the sheriff's pay. We take a look over in the prosecuting attorney's office. We look at the Bryans over there. The difference between, um, our prosecuting attorney and our chief deputy there, again, pay is very similar in those regards. It's a reflection of the, um, relationship between them and the elected official, and the need in the event the elected official was gone or unavailable.
Mike, while I agree with that statement, so in the two situations where those pay are so close, that's because of the experience behind those chief deputies. I mean, they're being paid for their knowledge. So I a hundred percent guarantee with everything you said, my concern is that we, we look at not only, um, their, their ability to step into an elected official, but also the knowledge that they have acquired during the time in that job. Because we start bumping up with some, especially with our directors, are now bumping up against where an elected official's pay is. And I have concerns. Um, you know, a lot of our directors are making the exact same that Doug makes as an elected official. And so I, I have some concerns that we continue to bump those underneath without bumping, you know, maybe we need to look at the elected officials also. Keep that in mind for this next year.
Well, I was gonna bring up the subject of Commissioner's salary. I wanted to see what you did there. That's six percent too?
Yes, sir. All the elected officials saw a six percent increase. That was, uh, obviously just, hey, this is kinda what we're doing for everybody else. I'm just, we'll just put in a standard six, and then let you folks decide where, I mean, I can provide data, absolutely, all day long. Uh, and give you, if you're at, if you would like to take a look at higher wages for the elected officials, absolutely, I would have certainly no objection to that.
Have you done that throughout the state?
Again, we've taken a look at what elected officials make. I did not do it this particular time. Pat had the budget submitted, or the recommendation, not the budget. She had the recommendation submitted. And I'm not even sure, uh, Clerk Miller, if she put in information for the elected officials or not. She might have, or she might have just gone with a standard six. Um, but we could certainly take a look, uh, because you're right, we wanna make sure that we've got our elected officials are getting paid a fair wage, based on the work that you're doing. And again, where did I hear, uh, Commissioner Mopkin, you might have been the one that suggested, or mentioned it, that Valley County is the third...
Third richest county in the state.
County in Idaho. And quite honestly, with that comes the responsibility.
It's, it's gonna get worse.
And what you're talking about is, when we state it that way, I don't know that that clarifies it for the public. It's, it's maybe the third most expensive. In my opinion, it's probably the second most expensive in the state to live. And that is where I have concerns, is that, you know, we, we're taking care of our staff. I'm really excited to see this is six percent, not two percent, cause I don't know where that came from. Um, it's important that we take care of our staff, but it's also important that we put elected officials in place that have the capacity and the knowledge and the will to serve. These are tough jobs. And if we don't continue to also look at the elected officials for increase, then we're not gonna be able to fill those positions with bright and intelligent people. So that's a concern to me to, to think about as we move forward.
Agreed.
I would certainly agree with these, um, assistants. Our chief deputy clerk, you know, Gabby does a fabulous job. I know that, um, Casey, you know, deserves that increase also. She may not have as much knowledge as Gabby does yet to fill in, but she's certainly getting there. Um, I would agree with, you know, these, these recommendations.
Yeah, I guess the thing that keeps rolling through my mind is, as far as the Commissioner's salary, is you look at some of these and and, and I, I don't know how to say this without sounding rude, but even the coroner's making more than we are. And I think Sherry makes a very good point that we're gonna draw maybe better qualified people if that salary is comparable.
I agree entirely with that, Commissioner.
Unfortunately, you guys have been getting what you've been paying for, for me.
We raised it, there're gonna be a whole lot of people running for office.
There'll be, then that's what you want.
That's exactly. We want people that are good and talented, and, you know, don't, don't just do it because they've got the time to do it. We, we've gotta have people that make this their career, because it's important. It's, we do such important work, and it's, it is very time-consuming. People don't understand that.
Yeah. And I see where we got the coroner's up. That's what he requested, Doug?
That is, Mister Chairman.
Okay. Yeah, I agree with Sherry on the, the assistant clerks. I think that's reasonable all the way through. Um, so the, the orange is gonna be the new rate?
Yes, sir.
Is there any of them, now, I'm looking at like, uh, deputy recorder at sixteen dollars. Are those positions pretty hard to fill?
Commissioner, which positions were those?
Well, this was Angu- Anguier's, Nicole's. Sixteen dollars an hour, it just doesn't seem to wanna buy you very good employees. I just don't... That, to me, it's always the base. Same thing in the treasurer, sixteen oh eight. It's gonna go to sixteen forty. I just feel like we could do a better job with that.
Commissioner Hasbrook, I would love to go higher. Absolutely. Yeah, uh, the beauty of being in HR and not in accounting is that I'm willing to spend all the money right now. And, but I also do know that, and I may have mentioned it to this body before, is, uh, I've mentioned it in the past to other people, with, when all things are being equal, if we pay below a market average, we're gonna get a below-average person in that job. And it's just unavoidable. Yes, we have a benefit package that is second to none in this community. That is what people come to work for us for. Uh, but you can't pay a mortgage on a benefit package, or you can't buy groceries on a benefit package.
See, and I, I saw that when we started seeing what the fire departments were paying, and Donley and Cascade. And, uh, it's terrible. You know, anything below twenty dollars an hour is, is, it's just, it's just not right. Not in Valley County.
And we've got, how many positions at that? Not too many. So I think we should probably take a look at some of those below the twenty-dollar rate.
And again, the only thing that we need to be cautious of there is that we're doing a salary survey that, you know, tells us what that position is worth. It's, I, and the thing is, is that we do have to take into account that we are an expensive county to live in. So even with a salary survey, if it's going on somewhere else, we need to make sure that we're tracking it to the other counties that are as expensive to live in as we are. But we only have three percent. You know, we only have so much of a budget to approve. Um, you know, Doug, I, um, there, there is some opportunities. Can we do a one-time payment to employees in compensation? The, the concern I always have is that we commit ourselves to an ongoing budget. And something happens where we don't have that. So now we have people paid at a higher salary, which is great, but then we have to start laying people off. We gotta balance those two things always. So how do we do this without, you know, we compensate the employees once? In exchange for a pay increase? I don't know.
But I know the market values are not gonna go down. It's just not gonna happen.
Not here.
Well, I know one year we tried to do merit raise. Well, I know one year we tried to do merit raises. And boy, did that turn into a big mess because the morale kind of got kicked in the teeth on that one because folks felt like they were worth more. But sixteen dollars and forty cents an hour, I just don't see how we can even get anybody to apply for the job.
Or keep the get-to-be employees that we have.
Yeah.
It is a struggle, but please know, again, as much as I would love to say, let's make our base minimum on any job twenty dollars an hour. All positions at that and above have got to move uphill accordingly. You can't have somebody right now who's making twenty dollars and fifty cents an hour, making five dollars an hour more than an entry job. Bring the entry to twenty and have that person satisfied at twenty fifty. They will expect to see their pay go up accordingly. Which is to avoid the compression that we can get. Again, I would love to do it. If we've got the money, I'm your guy. I'll put the plan together. It is important.
I think we'd make, sorry, Mike, I think we'd make the budget sustainable moving forward. And then we try and find a way to use maybe some ERPA, maybe something to do a one-off for the employees and give a, you know, a bonus as we can.
That's what we're gonna have to use in our remaining cash to fund next year's budget, the way that it's being presented to the commissioner.
And most of that was from unpaid salary?
It it's a variety of things, Mr. Chairman.
What would you get?
It's an analysis that, you know, it probably was unpaid salaries. It's unpaid expenses that we didn't move forward with, projects we didn't move forward with over the years that we've been kind of pushing to the curb that at some point in time we are gonna have to fund. So.
Doug, what was that number again? I missed that.
For this year, I feel that it's approximately
He said about two.
Two point six million of of the county's remaining cash will need to be used to balance the proposed budget you're reviewing for fiscal year 2024.
Plus seven hundred out of pelt.
No, that, I I I want to explain that to you, Commissioner Mopin, when we get there.
Okay, so the two point six million in carryover, what does that leave us in carryover?
Roughly, probably about three and a half million. And that's to look at, you know, the the commissioners and the county is reviewing our master facilities plan. So some of that money will be utilized to assist with the funding of that. So we won't have to go out for a larger bond if the commissioners do in fact make a decision to do that.
So let's go look at the road department.
That's something that the commissioners do have to take into consideration, of course, is the future projects that the county has in our mind that we're preparing for, specifically the master facilities plan.
And so this also includes two new positions, a part-time to full-time in the four H and also the deputy prosecuting attorney and new attorney.
That is correct, Commissioner Mopin, that is included in this year's proposed budget.
And that only totaled about two hundred and forty-one thousand. Now, the the four H is gonna move to full-time?
That's what the proposal has been, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, so you you doubled the eighteen nine is what you did? Okay, anything else, Mike or Doug?
Regarding the proposed salary increases, Chairman or Commissioners, it's it's been very well thought out, it's been analyzed by Pat Duncan, by Mike. And it sounds like there are some positions that the Commissioners would like Mike to take a look at, that they will, that if, will probably get back on the agenda hopefully within a week for a presentation again.
So Mike, let me ask you this, just hypothetically, if we didn't say twenty dollars, we said nineteen dollars as a minimum starting, sorry, would that still affect that compression?
Commissioner Hasbrook, yes, it would. There's always going, anytime you move your pay structure, this is just the overall pay that you pay your people, your minimum to your maximum. Anytime you increase that structure, you want to pay your existing staff accordingly at least that much. Otherwise, what you get is you get people with longevity whose pay is suddenly getting very much close to the pay of entry-level people. It generates ill will within your staff. And it creates, quite honestly, a lot of confusion amongst the staff. What am I getting paid? What should I getting paid? I've been here ten years, I'm making twenty-five cents an hour more than somebody walking in off the street. Some of it you can explain away, hey, you know, inflationary costs and cost of living increases, we've got to pay the new people. But we all feel that when that happens. And we as existing staff don't find that taken care of. But the short answer to your question, Commissioner, is if we want to increase the base pay of any positions, you do have to make adjustments. The smaller the increase, the smaller the adjustments. The greater the increase, the greater the adjustments. But remember, you increase somebody's base entry pay to nineteen dollars an hour or twenty dollars an hour. You have to look at the base pay of positions that we're currently paying twenty-one an hour, twenty-two an hour, and that's across the board, that's across all departments.
You run into the same issue, though. I mean, like when I was school board, you kept raising the base entry of new teachers coming in. I don't know if it was our school did it, if it came from the state, but it kept raising up. You had to, we knew we had to because of where we lived. We didn't have a choice.
Correct.
If we wanted new teachers, we had to pay more than thirty thousand a year coming in.
Absolutely.
And it was rough to just get people.
Yes.
I think, Mike, we have five positions that are at sixteen dollars an hour or more. The rest of them are all nineteen twenties.
Commissioner, we have some that are below, well, they will all be above sixteen if we get this approved. Right now, for instance, DMV clerk, records custodian, court clerk recruit or clerk of the court recruit, we're paying fifteen and a half.
What did we do? Go ahead.
Go ahead, Chair.
Well, I'm wondering, so this is just a minimum. That doesn't account for people coming in with experience. So, I mean, it's, it's, I I'm not, I don't have everything right in front of me, but Mike, when you're bringing in some of these employees into these positions, are we accounting for experience? So we're not paying them the minimum, we're bringing them in acknowledging whatever experience they bring.
Commissioner Mopin, that is correct. Depending on the position and the level of experience somebody can bring in, we are, yes, we do recognize that, and sometimes we do bring them in at a higher entry rate. The sheriff's office does that quite a lot, bringing somebody in, you know, if they've got twenty years of patrol experience down in Boise, they come here, we don't start them off at minimum.
So now what, if we made a base, you know, the nineteen or the twenty dollars an hour, what would that cost us on the people that are below?
Well, it would be, I mean, I could do fast and dirty numbers on this thing, but if you increase, for instance, we increase the base four percent across the board. All positions go up by four. We know we're gonna increase our budget minimum four percent overall. You would decide to increase it ten percent. You can see it'll be probably about a ten to twelve percent increase across the board. And so it is, again, not a numbers guy, but I can plug in fast and dirty numbers and tell you, I could take a look at what the overall annual budget is for personnel and say, if we want to increase the base pay upwards a certain amount, if we want to bring it from fifteen and a half up to, say, nineteen, you're looking at about, what would that be, about a twenty-five, thirty percent increase? That's probably about what you'd be looking at for an increase across the county. Some of it you could maybe, you could compress the wages somewhat when you start getting up near the top. It does create concerns, but it can be done, but it would be an increase. It'd be a significant increase that Doug would have to find the money for, and that might be a challenge. But I want to just stress upon you the good you're doing by talking about increasing it as much as you can this year. We always want to do it the full thing. The fact that you're willing to take as big a bite as you can possibly afford is phenomenal, and I commend you all for that. And don't be afraid to take a look at your salaries or the salaries of elected officials. It is not illegitimate to say that, to think that, to want to do that. We plugged in six percent because we were going six percent. Maybe it should be ten, maybe it should be twelve, twenty-five, fifty percent. But also recognize, you know, it's the destination we're trying to get at. We may have to take a few steps to get there.
Mike, do you remember what we did for our part-times? Like groomers and what did we do with that salary?
I believe, Commissioner, that we just did the same standard.
We don't have those in here.
If they're not on here, I would recommend that they get the same six percent for, as everyone else. They're no less of an employee to us as anybody else.
So guys, the cost of a six percent increase on our salary base is eight hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. So if you're talking about taking and increasing those base wages that high, I mean, it could be two million dollars, we can't afford that. So as much as I, you know, would love to do that with our employees also, I don't, I think we have to work at this gradually. I mean, six percent this year is a pretty big increase for the county. And again, maybe if we could do a one-off on something that would support the employees, let them know that we really care, that they're here and keeping them. But if if we try and raise too fast, it hurts us in the future. We have to have a sustainable budget as we move forward. And if we use all of it with salaries, we have nothing else to give in the future if we need new positions, if we need to do some things.
So Doug or or Mike, did you figure in like the cost to pursue him?
Yes, all that's included, Mr. Chairman.
And then our medical insurance, which is not in yours, went up, it was a nine and a half percent. That's another bill.
That's a different budget though, Mr. Chairman.
And our liability insurance, our Crip insurance, our fire insurance.
That has been included into the proposed budget that year.
I suppose we better quit right here. Hey, for no more questions on this, where do you want to go next?
Chairman, I think what I was going to show the Commissioners is just the the expense, the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget expense report. So I will put that on projector.
And you know, I was going through these year last week, and a lot of departments are even less than last year. Or if they did go up, they didn't go very much. So I want to commend everybody on.
We're on general fund.
Yeah, go to expenses.
Zero 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 one.
And like, the assessors went down, treasures went up, twenty-two thousand. I mean, everybody was really close to last year's. I think the sheriff was where's those final numbers? Sheriff was probably the biggest jump, but securities are number one priority.
I guess what I'd like to do is just go over, present it to the Commissioners. The first one that we're reviewing is the clerk auditor. Did the Commissioners have any questions regarding the clerk auditor proposed budget?
Doug, will you pop that out so it's larger? It's easier on my end, I think it's up at the top. I think it's at the top bar.
Well, most of that increase in the clerks was in salaries. It's only a two thousand increase or twenty-four hundred and B budget for the clerk.
All right, can you see that better, Commissioner Mopin?
Yes, thank you.
There are no questions, we'll move down to the assessors.
Just real quick, Doug, the public relations is McKenzie's, right?
That is correct.
And that's staying the same?
That is correct. Based on the work that we are seeing the past few years, we do feel that thirty thousand dollars is a good proposed budget for that position.
So let's go down the assessors. And that one, the A budget dropped, but I'm assuming that's the contract for
No, this Commissioners, last year, there were five positions being paid out of this budget, and this year, there's only four positions. There's the assessor, the chief deputy, and two, the two plat clerks.
And the rest is coming out of revale?
Correct. What is, explain revale to me. Revale is the actual, the appraisers. Those are actually people who go out and do the That's correct. And the in-office or the Assessor's office. Yep, okay.
So her budget went from three hundred thousand down to two hundred and fifty-four. But we probably ought to look at the appraisers. Revale, where's that?
I will get there, that's fund number twenty, Mr. Chairman.
So you want to go to treasurer?
Yep, did the Commissioners have any questions on the proposed budget for the treasurer's office?
And that whole increase was all salary. Only twenty-two thousand increase from last year for the whole department. I think that's phenomenal.
Move on to the sheriff's budget?
That's the biggest jump that I could see. It really wasn't that much, hundred and hundred and what? They got a big not even a hundred thousand, eighty thousand?
Yeah, they went three seventy-six to four sixty, yeah, they went about seventy thousand.
Their B expenses were down sixty thousand, but they made up the difference in the budget, in the salary. I think that's pretty
Doug, on the sheriffs? The twenty thousand on the vehicles? The twenty thousand, we haven't put into the budget anywhere anymore, sheriff's vehicles that are gonna have to be outfitted, do we?
No, not for next fiscal year, Commissioner.
They just got what, eight?
Yeah, they just got a lot.
Okay, let's go on down to Commissioners. That one was about a fifty thousand increase in salaries and
No.
No, 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 that's not right. Seventeen thousand.
Ten thousand.
Seventeen thousand increase. And then where?
I think you're off, Mr. Chairman, it's less than that.
Last year, we approved a hundred and sixteen.
Hundred and ninety-four thousand, this year it's two oh five. Yeah, we're only nine
I was just looking at salaries.
Thousand increase.
I was just looking at salaries. Where did we? So we, we didn't even bump that up nine grand?
Yep, nine, ten.
We put a little more into travel in case Neil wants to go back.
Eleven thousand, yeah.
That's Sherry running all over the country. You did reduce your, your B budget.
Budget was down.
And getting sick.
You're welcome, Neil. You're welcome, I'm bringing home the COVID for the county things.
That's what happens when you go to Austin.
Hey, let's go to coroner. And that increase was mainly salary.
That's correct, and that's had been requested based on the hours that he has been putting in.
But he did drop his B budget quite a bit to make up the difference. For actually six thousand less than last year. Okay, where we going next, prosecuting attorney?
And as pointed out, Mr. Chairman, the additional attorney has been budgeted for. Well, they are getting another one? What is being proposed and recommended. Okay.
Oak, did you guys, did Zippity show up at all this week to drill, they're there?
I saw them working in the road.
Awesome, good news. Hey, juvenile detention center, pretty much Hey, juvenile detention center, pretty much stays the same. Public defender, what did we do there? We bumped that one. Who was that?
This is the last year commissioners, uh, that. County will be, um, having this in our budget. Again, the majority of this is being paid for by the state that we collect in revenue. There will be a small amount in remaining cash that's going to be used to um, support the proposed increase that was made by the public defenders office, but this, uh, is the last time that the count, Valley County, any counties in the state of Idaho will be budgeting for the public defense.
It's because states.
The state's going to be taking it over.
So we won't be.
You will not see this in twenty twenty-five budget.
So we won't be collecting any of that at all?
Correct.
Okay, let's move on down to buildings and grounds.
Mr. Chairman, this is one that we're not. The janitorial, we did increase, but we don't have the bids yet. Uh, I believe that's on the agenda for the fourteenth. It's possible that the contracts janitorial could move either up or down. Of course, we always hope that it will go down, but I don't know if that's a possibility or not, but this is, um, an, an expense line that we aren't really sure on just yet because we haven't, uh, the commissioners haven't received the RFPs yet.
Hey Doug, while we're right there on the fairgrounds, I noticed that, um, so we're getting twenty here. He's got twenty in it. We're, we're actually levying for seventy. Is a portion of that ours to work on the fairgrounds?
The twenty thousand is just for the maintenance of the fairgrounds. The seventy thousand that is being budgeted for the fairgrounds is the actual operation.
Okay, well, historically, we've only given them thirty-five.
Last year we gave them seventy.
We gave them, wow. Okay, we need to talk about that one a little bit further if they're, did they give us a budget to show that seventy?
We have received, uh, one, a report from the treasurer, but I don't know if the commissioners have seen that and I don't know if they've made a formal presentation during the fairground committee. Um, I would defer to Commissioner Thompson if that has been discussed during the fair board meeting.
Not that.
So. So do we need to, because we are going to be expending ARPA money, we know the two hundred and fifty, does that have to be budgeted someplace?
It would be budgeted. Sorry, Commissioner Moppen.
I'm just not seeing it here. So do we need to do a one-time budget for increases down there or where are you putting that?
We're putting that just in the ARPA expenditures, expenses, and once we get to that fund, I'll, I'll show you that fund.
Okay.
Okay, so then let's move on down to civil defense.
We do believe, uh, this is going to stay the same, but emergency services manager, uh, Juan Bonilla will be presenting, um, the proposed civil defense budget next week. So we'll, we'll know by next week if this is an accurate number or not.
Doug, what is the contracts other in this?
That was, uh, it, we don't utilize that expense line. That expense that came out of there should have been contract professional services.
Well, that twenty-six nineteen is going to.
We need to journal entry that out of.
Yeah, let's take it out.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Economic development. Now, this one is interesting.
Commissioners, you'll see a large expense for thirteen million. This is to take into account if the county is awarded the broadband grant that has been applied for. Um, you will see this in the revenue side as well, uh, but to make sure that we have an expense line to, um, utilize to fund that if the county is awarded that, that grant, we do need to capture that and that's where it's captured is in economic development.
Thirteen million, one hundred.
It's a thirteen, yes, sir.
That's a grant?
Grant.
And then we usually just put in around a hundred thousand a year for it. That's why the hundred, thirteen thousand, one hundred sixty-five in the group and then the ad pro grant. Sherry, did we, did we raise the executive director's salary for that?
We put an extra ten in there because the additional expenses toward housing that she's focused on.
It was twenty-five and we raised it to thirty-five?
Thirty-five, yes. Well, we've been doing thirty over the last few years, but last year we did thirty-five. It looks like they haven't, um, gotten any full invoice yet to get all of that thirty-five, but that's not, we just did thirty-five again this year.
Right. Just want to make sure we got it in there.
Yeah.
Okay, let's go to county agent next. And we're reimbursed. How much of this, Doug?
We're not reimbursed any of this, Mr. Chairman. I mean, they pay for the.
A lot of stuff.
They pay for the, um, the extension educator. They pay Melissa's salary, but we do make a contri- contribution to the U of I for fifteen hundred dollars. So you're paying the the operation costs. And then the, this, uh, University of Idaho is paying the extension educator's salary.
So our full-time four-H gal, is she in here?
Correct.
That's where the, the A budget went up.
Correct. You have your, your four-H coordinator, you have your, um, office staff, and then you have your de- deputy, I'm going to call it a deputy four-H coordinator that is being presented to go to full-time.
And there's not going to be any more part-time employees?
No.
You can eventually get rid of that line? Or you're just going to leave the small amount in there?
We're not, we're not going to budget for part-time because that's, it's not a position any longer. Move to data processing? Or were you sorry?
Well, I was going to talk to you. The after-school programs are going through a lot of limbo right now. Have we heard anything more on that, any of that funding?
Mr. Chairman, no.
Twenty-five hundred and it's like.
That's what was requested.
Seems to me like there was nothing coming out here with more money for after-school. Maybe that's the thing that Labrador's investigating.
Did increase it by five hundred.
Yeah. Got to watch that one because we'll lose all those programs if we don't. Hey, data processing.
I have.
Oh, go ahead.
No, I just have an idea on some of those programs when we get down to the ARPA money, but.
Well, gosh, I could have sworn we talked about this just somewhere a couple of weeks ago. There's was it federal money or something that's coming to Idaho for after-school? Where did I see that?
So that comes through the Economic Development Council out.
Well, does it?
Uh, we actually have an early learning specialist within that program and they're receiving all of those federal funding. So we actually have a full-time, uh, staff member on board that works on early learning. So I don't know what the after-school program is, but I mean, a lot of that comes through the four-H, but also the Economic Development Council is also addressing some of that.
So when the Economic Development Council budget, is there money to, is there a way to receipt that money in if they get all these grants?
Yes.
Okay. That's my concern, because I think somewhere I read there's going to be a bunch of money for after-school stuff. And I don't know if you read the opioid settlement funds that are headed this way?
And that's, I want to address that as, as we get down there too.
Yeah, let's go to data processing and then we'll work our way down the list. And I think this year Jeremy said that there was a lot of things that he was going to.
He's going to focus on.
On.
Yes, sir.
So they dropped the capital IT, that dropped over a hundred thousand. We've got new desktops, we've got a new dispatch center.
Tyler's in there.
Tyler's in, yeah.
Hey, um, did Jeremy say anything more? What now, switch went out the other day? You know, that severely impacted. Is he going to need additional funding after that to do anything with switches and?
He came in that Saturday and put in a new switchboard that he had. He had the part four, he just had to put it, you know, do the switch. Took him about six hours, but he already had the, the network switch.
Okay.
Well, I think we're okay there. Is there any big scanning left to do, Doug? We're pretty well scanned, aren't we?
We, we are, Mr. Chairman.
That's really good news. How many years that took?
We need a party. We need a party.
Need a party. Hey, let's go to elections. And I Anything you see there, Doug?
Yes, sir.
Everything's good there? So human resources, risk management. Let's go there next. Mike, you got enough in here for, for traveling and all that stuff? Education?
Mr. Chairman, I think I do, yes.
Background checks.
I just want to make sure we keep up on our training.
Yeah.
Mike, so make sure y'all was.
We got eight thousand in there. And we've spent thirty-six fifty-five so far this year, so should be enough. And actually, you came in at a lower budget than last year, Mike, so good job.
That's because he doesn't get paid what Pat got paid yet.
Yeah, the word, the word there being yet. General fund.
Put it in there.
General fund is where we're going to find all the, the rest of it.
And commissioners, you'll see that there is an increase to the medical insurance by the nine point five percent that we've taken into account. The proposed increases to the salaries, we've increased the retirement and the social security. Um, and then we've left the workman's comp the sa- same. The reason that you're not seeing any expenses from the state um, unemployment is because that is handled by Idaho Association of Counties and we have a balance with them that they're currently using, but we don't want to not budget for that in case our amount goes lower, but for the past two years, uh, commissioners, you will see that there haven't been any expenditures coming out of that because there is a reserve with Idaho Association of Counties.
Well, and our workman's comp has gone way down, but that can change really fast, but we're not even half of last year's or about half of last year's, so that's good news. We don't get any more accidents.
Commissioner Moppen, you wanted to talk about the opioid settlement funds. We have budgeted eighty thousand dollars for opioid settlement funds in the general fund, general budget. We currently have approximately eleven thousand in remaining cash that's going to be utilized to fund that eighty thousand and then we're scheduled to get approximately seventy thousand in, uh, future settlement, opioid settlement funds that the commissioners can utilize. And we did reduce the, um, the substance abuse prevention. That was money that the commissioners contributed to youth advisory coalition. We took that down to zero because, because Commissioner Moppen, you had indicated that you want to potentially use the opioid settlement funds to pay for those contributions that were previously made.
And that's where I think we need to focus for the next few years. These groups that are getting started with, um, these types of programs in Valley County, I think we do need to make sure and use those opioid funds toward them. Whether it's, uh, you know, right now the structure I think is working really well, where they go to, um, why?
V Corp.
V Corp. Sorry, I got COVID.
It's okay.
V, V Corp, and then, you know, through the grant process, they're able to acquire those funds, but I think we need to reserve that eighty for those groups that are servicing that need. And I noticed below that we didn't have them outlined for any kind of, um, donation, so is that the plan, Doug? Is that what you have budgeted?
That's what I understood the commissioners wanted to do, yes, is to utilize those opioid funds for those type of contributions that were previously made to those organization, organizations in the past by the commissioners. Is specifically use the opioid funds for those contributions.
And I would agree with that. Now, I'd like to, and Neil, I'd like to put just in the back of our minds that maybe we look at a grant fund out of the ARPA funds, setting aside a specific amount where, you know, every year we take these opioid funds and maybe add to a little bit. Um, and allow people to write grants out of a pool of funds. It will use some of those ARPA to, to put an initial, uh, tranche of funds, if you will, in something. That's a conversation I'd like to have.
And, and I think it can also be tied for other grants as well, even like the pickleball and that kind of stuff. But the only thing I know is that the opioid funds, we have to be very careful how we spend those.
There are. There, there's some specific.
Agreed.
Now, Doug, what about the fire mitigation contract? If we get this G and A agreement with the state and that could be.
So, Mr. Chairman, we.
Where are we going to do that?
We budgeted for that under a grant G and A infrastructure. That's expense line seven oh one dash zero zero five zero. That's a new.
Oh, there we go. Okay, good, good. You got it. Great job.
Doug, can I, can I go back to the opioid for just one second?
Absolutely.
In your, in the comments of that, we have to be really careful with what those are spent on and that's why I'm saying these groups also have to have some funding just to pay the rent. Um, and that's why I'm thinking is, you know, if we put two hundred and fifty thousand dollars with our ARPA funds into a health, I don't know what you'd call it. But into our community for mental health, for substance abuse, those types of things. Opioid can then be used specifically for opioid, but these groups could apply for some grant funding um, as we move forward, just to help them get established. That was, you know, kind of what my thoughts were.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, Sherry. Um, I would like to keep the two hundred and fifty thousand kind of open because if we need it for somewhere else for, we can move it around if we have some major emergency, but um, I think if, you know, even tying it just to substance abuse, not necessarily opioid abuse, we could probably use a lot of funds for that as well. I know we're, we're still trying to.
Mental health. Mental health is so critical right now in this country.
And then we need the medical assisted, what was it called, Matt, the mat? I think we have one person up here that can do the mat treatment for opioid, but that's a really important.
So Doug, do we need to, if we think we're going to use a part of those ARPA funds for something like that, do we have to budget differently? Or can we just budget on?
We just.
The ARPA line.
I would propose that we just budget out of that. Uh, and when we get there, I'll show you what we've done, but we do need to have it in our, in the back of our mind. I mean, if you guys want specific expense lines for those, then we will have to do that. It might be, if that's what the commissioners want to do, is budget separately, we can do that. Or what we did was just had an ARPA fund, uh, that the expenditures would be coming out of.
What's the grants and contributions? Could we use that?
Seven oh one, zero, 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 zero.
If you wanted, but that's any other grants that we might apply for, uh, that we always have had a grants and contributions line in the general fund, general budget, just in case there's any other outlier grants that the county applies for, um, with a, you know, a revenue also to capture that.
Okay, got it. That wouldn't work then, so ARPA might be the best line item to use.
Now, I'd like to go on down and talk about the seniors and McPaws. We jumped McPaws up another ten thousand to twenty-five thousand. I think we need to do something for the seniors as well. I know the Cascade requested fifteen thousand. I'm not saying we should do that much, but we're going to give McPaws that much, but I think we need to treat the seniors better as well. I would be, I'd be willing to take that up to ten thousand instead of eighty-five hundred.
I think we take the ten and divide it by three. I, why are we giving McPaws ten thousand more?
That's what they requested.
And that was so the law enforcement can have twenty-four, seven access to, uh, the shelter?
That's right. That's to fulfill that MOU.
That's correct, Commissioner Moppen.
All right, Eld, I agree. I mean, how much do you want to go?
Well, we could go, let, let's go, well, let's say, I'm just throwing numbers out, five thousand to McPaws, raise that to twenty. Take the other five and split it between the two seniors. So that would give them all ten thousand.
So will McPaws do that MOU at that?
They, they.
The question.
They will. They presented to the commissioners, um, when they made the presentation that they will.
Okay. So I would agree with that then.
Let's take Cascade Senior, McCall Senior up to ten thousand and drop McPaws down to twenty.
I would caution the commissioners to do that. I, I mean, if you want to increase the, the seniors.
You want to leave McPaws at twenty-five?
That was what they had requested in, in agreeing to that MOU, commissioners.
And there's, there's another one. Substance abuse prevention, maybe that's where. Substance abuse prevention, maybe that's where we could use ARPA dollars.
Oh, that's where we would use the opioid money, Mr. Chairman.
That's different than op, that's the same as opioid money?
That's what I had heard the Commissioners, uh, during the previous workshops is they, this, the contributions that had been made in the past to like the Youth Advisory Coalition.
That's where it came from?
That's where it came from, yes sir, so just to use opioid money for those future contributions.
Um, what are we doing, oh, we're not doing a waterway study. Imagine Idaho, I'm assuming he's gonna go away, you got the GNA. Other expense.
So, Imagine Idaho is still working on broadband for us. That is a nonprofit group. Yeah, um, matter of fact, they're doing a grant award for us right now. So if we could even give them twenty-five hundred, that would probably be a good thing. They're gonna work for us as we move forward.
Works for me.
Okay.
So about twenty-five hundred in Imagine Idaho, Doug?
Okay.
You're running all this.
Yeah, you're not gonna see those changes right now, Mr. Chairman, I apologize, I'll have the ability to do that later, but I am taking, uh, detailed notes.
What else do we need?
Sherry, what is, what is Imagine Idaho?
Imagine Idaho is a nonprofit that actually is working for the state level broadband. But what they do is they write grants on behalf of communities. Currently, they're writing our planning grants, uh, with the work that we've already done, there, that's part of that thirteen million dollars that we are writing. So they're working on our behalf.
Come in, man, sure.
Okay.
So I'd like to support them in any way we can.
Yep, yep.
Doug, I'm sorry, but I wasn't tracking when you guys went over the area for the substance abuse, the, you said that we took the ten thousand substance abuse prevention and put it where?
In the opioid settlement.
Okay, so that's part of the eighty.
That's correct.
So that's just a pool of funds that we can use?
Yes ma'am.
For all of that.
That's correct.
And then just so you guys know, if you go above that, a couple lines of animal damage control. They asked for fifty-five hundred, we gave them five. And they actually, we went over on that budget, so I recommended to Doug, we raise that to fifty-five hundred. So that we're not over budget.
Okay.
And those guys have been working pretty hard, we're getting our money's worth up here. Veteran's Service Officer.
Commissioners, I haven't had the opportunity to talk with your Veteran Services Officer, Jamie Coffey Kelly, we're trying to coordinate a meeting this week to, for me to get a better understanding of the request that we can present to the Commissioners. It is possible that that is going to be going up. Um, but I will be meeting with her to make sure that we have budgeted regarding her requests.
And the last, the last time she was.
Came in and talked to us?
Yeah, and remember, she wanted to, authority to spend a hundred and some dollars for a scanner.
And we can get that.
And so it's, just go for it and.
She was awesome.
So what's, wait until you meet with her and see what that comes in.
That potentially is gonna change, just want to make sure the Commissioners are aware of that.
So we go to jail. You guys ready to move on?
Jail.
Ready for a nap, does that count?
Yeah, I got that.
I like your head's pretty well plugged up.
It is.
Food contract went significantly up, Commissioners, I'm just trying to point out some of the, uh, the expenses that have, that will be going up, there are two new expense lines for mattresses and restraints, they wanted specific expense lines for those.
Um, Doug, I have a question for you, just something keeping back your mind. This leak out here could be a main water line to either the jail or the courthouse. And it'd be interesting to see if they fix that if our water bill goes down. Cause that's leaking pretty good. Is there an increase in the jail medical? That, did he already?
Well, we've, if you remember Commissioners, you have contracted with a company that we are hoping will reduce our medical costs, uh, so next fiscal year, we're just proposing, uh, a proposed budget of thirty-five thousand. Unfortunately, we might go over this year, but we'll, we'll wait and see.
Well, I'm talking about the contract itself, the contract.
The contract medical, no, there was no proposed increase.
Good, excellent.
And has that contract already been approved?
Yeah, I think we just did that, didn't we?
Through, uh, through Sawtooth, I will have to double check on that Commissioners and the jail to see if that is an annual renewal, I was assume that it is. So I will follow up with the jail staff on that with the lieutenant.
So when you're, we're talking medical, we're talking like prescriptions and things of that sort?
Or inmates specifically, yes sir, Commissioner Thompson.
Well, that whole budget went up about, missed a hair under two hundred thousand.
A lot of that is the salaries, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, most of it's salaries. Hey, you guys ready to move on to planning zoning?
Did we make sure that Lori got her new position put in there, Doug?
Yes.
Okay.
So that one went up about seventeen thousand, mostly salary. Um.
And what, you're, in flipping through that, so did we get her vehicle? The gas, she's now paying her own gas? Okay, we got it.
Yeah, we got.
She's got that vehicle now, we need to make sure we're accounting for underneath her apartment.
And we increased, or actually, we've just reduced that to two thousand, but we feel we'll, we'll get a better understanding of how often that's being used and if we need to adjust that in future years.
So this is the first time she's had her vehicle.
They've had a, a vehicle specifically for that department.
For that department, yep. And that comes out of her budget as far as.
The fuel would be, yeah, the, the vehicle was actually, uh, it was the old sheriff vehicle. Uh, so we won't have to purchase that, it was just basically, yeah, lateral transition.
Well, I was gonna ask you too Doug, before you surplus some of those old vehicles, does that money come back into motor pool?
Depends, if it's a road department vehicle, then no, it would go back into the road department. But if it's a, a vehicle, say it's the Durango that, then that would come back into the general.
Into the general fund.
Yep.
So you're tracking that too? Um, are you good under planning zoning under the professional service engineering? Are you good with that, because one year we went over.
That was what was, uh, recommended by Planning and Zoning Director Sinda. Into her for next fiscal year.
And that's.
They're using what, water engineers and people like that?
Plats and.
Yep.
Plat engineers, building permit engineers. Sherry, are we talking or looking at any kind of regional planning costs if we decide to go down that road?
Oh, that's a good question, Eld, I do want to start a regional planning conversation this year. I don't know that it's with the rec, or the, you know, a third party vendor, I don't know that this one's not just a community conversation. But putting something in there. Um, at least to hire somebody to have some regional meetings, that is something that the counties or the cities would really like to do with the county is doing some regional planning quarterly.
And you know, does that mostly deal with transportation and infrastructure, or is that more planning and zoning stuff?
It would actually be, um, land use planning, I mean, it would be. It would be trans, well, not really transportation, but it would just be a conversation between everybody, this is where our infrastructure is. This is where we would like to see growth, you know, where you don't see growth, you know, what's happening in each one of those communities that might help empower and impact ongoing conversations. I think that it is time to start doing that type of planning, I don't know if we want that under our budget, now that you say that, or under Sinda's budget.
Well, that's kind of what I'm thinking is if we could bump this professional services, even though it's engineering, to include you know, a regional planner. Cause I think we gotta hire somebody to help run those meetings, we can't expect P and Z to do all that.
No, I agree with that a hundred percent. Um, and I think if we had four meetings this year, that would be awesome, so. Ten thousand?
Probably ten, that would give us money to rent a facility and provide snacks and treats and pay you know, probably a speaker or someone to come up and manage it. But I think it's something we need to start considering.
Do you want to do it under ours? So that we can control those expenses and I can run it?
I don't know where, would that be under economic development?
Well, it could be. Then we could actually have the Economic Development Council do it.
I think that would be where I'd want to do it, and then keep, kind of keep P and Z out of it, cause they got enough on their plate now.
I agree with that, Doug, will you add ten thousand to the economic development then?
I will.
Okay, so let's go down and finish up planning zoning. And their total budget went up about seventeen thousand, we're good there. Building Department. And the building department jumped up seventeen thousand two, and that was all salary.
I think she's got the right number of employees moving forward, so.
Six thousand for fuel, is that gonna work? Yeah, that's about right.
Be surprised what would this year, they're really doing a lot of permits.
They spent four thousand so far this year, we're gonna be close on that fuel. Bet we go over. Everybody good with building department?
Yep.
Running out of time, we gotta get to the end of this, welfare. And that's all grants.
This is to YCAP thing?
YCAP, yeah.
I don't know, Commissioner Mopkin, are you? Is this?
Let's leave, let's leave it in there, Doug.
Okay.
So motor pool next.
This is actually DMV, Mr. Chairman.
Oh. Motor vehicle, sorry. Blurring already today. So we're good there, we've talked about that, communications, we've the only thing that I haven't heard anything about, any discussion about, we're working on getting everybody on the same radios. But I think there's, uh, LAPC is still in the studying process, they're trying to get an inventory of all the different fires and EMS and all the road department. And what they have, how old is it and how many they would need before we can really go down that trail, but according to the Homeland Security guys in the state, there's all kinds of funds for that. I know at one time they were estimating to be between eight hundred and a million dollars. Buy everybody the same radios, but that's still in discussion, so I think we need to wait.
So we're trying to get all the sheriffs and all the EMS.
And the city, including the city police and everybody, all using the same radios.
Same radios, same band.
And then the goal is kind of like what we do with mountaintop repeaters, we put so much money into a maintenance account every year. And, and, uh, so we can replace X amount of radios every year, radios don't last very long. And we spent a lot of money on radios over the years, and everybody's got a different kind and they're not talking to each other, that's the goal.
Needs to be universal, across the board.
Road departments on there, or hopefully will be on there too, but.
Yeah, yeah.
We're already, we're hoping that the new radios they're buying will be able to be used by the rest, that was the focus of that. That was for Neil.
Mm-hmm.
Well, how do we? How do we assure that, though, I mean, if, if they're buying and the sheriffs are buying, the police are buying?
Well, that's the goal, is that through the LAPC, everybody's gonna work together and and we're gonna do it as a one larger purchase, we'll get a better price. But there's a, different kinds of radios, Motorola, I don't, can't remember all of them.
There's several.
This guy is looking at where we have our dead spots and how we can fix those with different style radios, all that kind of stuff.
Neil, Jeremy did some work to find out a radio that could potentially be used by all. And that's what the road department is investing in, we can't wait anymore because they're out of radios and they can't get them fixed. So we, we've been waiting two years, I think, and it's, we just have to pull the trigger and buy them. So hopefully what we're buying is compatible with whatever is investments in the future.
Okay. So that budget went up about eighty thousand. General Fund Reserve, we're gonna keep that at three fifty. You guys can tell, we haven't spent much out of it this year, but that's always been emergency money if we get West Nile virus, or if we have to bump up mosquito studies, or we have a blowout in the.
They just got a contingency fund operating.
This is kind of our, yeah, get out of jail money. Right? Motor pool. And I think that one went up a little bit. Mainly for repairs.
And, uh, some vehicles too.
Vehicles.
That were submitted during the.
Hundred and thirty, two hundred and eighty thousand, that was the jail van and.
Correct.
What was the other one?
You have one for.
Different. It's on that CIP program.
It is on the CIP.
But I can't remember what the other one was.
I think Jeff's got some in his division too.
Yeah, we proved the jail van, I don't remember what. Remember what else?
There's always some in there, we always should have some in there, simply because we have to keep replicating all the time.
I'll follow up with them.
It's okay. Well, let's, let's go down to Parks and Rec. We've got about twenty more minutes.
There was a couple things that came out on Parks and Rec, is Larry in the room?
No.
Oh.
Okay. Smith Ferry is really wanting to take. Well, wait, I'm ahead of it, that's snowmobiling, never mind.
Um, you talking about the grooming?
Yeah.
This is more. I think they're talking about right now, putting the whole thing under one, one umbrella.
That would be awesome.
I don't know if that's gonna happen, but they are in discussion about that right now.
That's a great idea.
There's Larry.
Hey Larry, we're looking at your budget right now, is there anything else you can think of that we didn't get in here?
I think Doug and I went over it pretty well.
The rent lease land at forty thousand, and that's in case something pops up?
Yeah, in case we end up with, uh, Turkey Track.
Isn't that the lease around the lake, Larry? You gotta have a line item budget to get that money in to spend it.
That's correct.
But the.
It's not, it's not the stuff the United pay it.
Oh, it's not? This is an additional forty?
They're paying direct. We put.
Oh, interesting.
We put it in there so that we could, um, in case the, sorry. Uh, Little Lake pops up and the Turkey Track pops up. Which we're hearing we're gonna end up getting that.
And you think that's gonna be a lease?
Awesome.
You have any idea how much a year?
No, that's the problem.
Okay.
I called, um, uh, out there again last week. He says he's gonna advertise it in the next month, so they're just gonna add it to our existing budget. So it could be a lot less than, it probably will be a lot less than that.
Larry, you sound like me this morning.
Oh boy.
Now, the. Dave ends up moving at the Lake Fork.
I left my inhaler downstairs.
Is that gonna cost any more money, have Dave up there? If he moves to Lake Fork, when we get broadband?
He's, Dave's been in Lake Fork now for almost two months. It'll really be nice once we get, uh, the internet set up up there.
You got three thousand in Supplies Office, is that?
Right.
I'm assuming that's where you're gonna pay for stuff?
Yeah, we'll be, we'll be putting signs up there at Lake Fork and, and having, uh, maps and stuff from the Forest Service to hand out and it'll be a great place for the county.
We, um, I think you and I talked about it, I don't know if I remember, something we talked about was the, uh, the groomers are looking at every, all of them come underneath one umbrella? Is that still being a discussion?
It's a discussion, but it won't happen this year.
Is that through a county, or is that through legislature?
Say it again.
How do you do that? Is that through a county process, or? How do you do that? Is that through a county process or a legislative?
Yeah, right, well, we can do it. The ID, we asked IDPR to break it out originally before I was here. And um, I've talked to him about what it would take. It would just take the county to ask him to put it back together. But I think it would be best to have the Advisory Committee make that suggestion.
Okay. So and, and they're in discussion, so we'll just wait to hear from them.
Yes. Make my job a lot easier having that and Doug's having that all together as one budget.
So Larry, I have a question on, on how to handle this. So Pickleball wants the hundred and fifty out of ARPA. And the Rec Council is recommending that. Uh, we'll have that conversation of what you're doing, but as far as your budget, should that be within a Parks and Recreation grant? So that we would actually take it out of ARPA and put it into the Parks and Rec? Um, or Doug, do you want to just keep it under ARPA separately?
If the Commissioners do in fact agree to that, I think we would just take it out of ARPA.
Okay. Then how do we track it? That's my, that's always my deal. You know me. How do you track it appropriately?
Using our expense report and then I also have a folder that I have to save all of those expenses to. When I'm doing the annual report to the US Treasury.
So we're now some kind of a spreadsheet showing how we spend all of it.
That is correct.
So Doug, I'm assuming though, if, if Pickleball wants X amount of dollars, we're not gonna give them money. They're gonna give us. A bill, a claim, and we're gonna pay it.
Yes.
Is that how that would work?
Yeah, we'd have to have some sort of invoice if the Commissioners do in fact.
And, and I, I think Parks and Rec would monitor the whole process to make sure what is supposed to happen actually happens. And to make sure it's the quality and, and that we need.
Well, we have, we have a lot of conversation around that. I just want to make sure we're talking about how to do it budgetarily, but.
Yeah, and I did add, I don't know if you noticed, I did add, as we agreed last year, I added five percent to salaries.
Yeah, and we. It's actually six percent.
Any other questions?
So do you have grants out right now for two million?
No, but we could easily end up there. We've, with uh, the CIP stuff, we were at, if I remember correctly, pretty close to eight hundred thousand. And now we were talking about Turkey Track and Little Lake.
Okay.
That's a lot of money.
Hey, let's go down to Road and Bridge. And Sherry, this is where we need to talk about if we're gonna hire someone to assist, assist Jeff in the office, kind of the.
Are we gonna talk about that this afternoon now?
Well, sometime we got, if we're gonna do that, we gotta make sure we get it in this budget.
Yeah, we do.
Let's talk about it. We still got some more time to change this, figure out what we want to do and then go from there.
Mr. Chairman, I would just.
We've got a call.
My apologies, Commissioner Mopin.
No, go ahead, Doug.
I, I would just recommend that the Commissioners have that conversation and then we'll have another budget workshop if needed next week. Uh, and if we need to have a special meeting, we can do that too, but I, I think first what needs to take place is the conversation.
Yep.
What you're gonna have this afternoon?
On this afternoon.
Yep. So everybody's good with the Road and, Road and Bridge?
What's the employee part-time, Doug, the thirty-five thousand?
That's for snow groomers, or for um, part-time uh, maintenance in this, in the winter for snow removal?
Okay.
That's who he plays, the guy I think out at Yellow Pine to plow the roads. That comes out of there. There's a parking lot, so we pay people to plow.
That, I don't think that comes out of there. That's actually the part-time employees that Jeff brings on or the Road Department brings on to assist with winter maintenance.
So then where does he pay the? Like the guys that plow Crown Point, the private guys?
I saw another line I'm on that, but why is the, why is he not just putting that into salaries?
Cause it's part-time positions. They're not, they're not full-time employees that come back.
Oh, so they don't get the insurance and all that. Got it.
So that, well, they're not even contracted. They're just employees using county equipment. Is that right?
Um, sometimes they provide their own equipment, but most of the time it's ours.
Else I think there's a High Valley line item and.
There, there is.
Yeah, that was six thousand, I think, last year and Cecil was quite a bit out at Yellow Pine last year. I was looking more at the fuel because I think fuel's about to take off again. He's bumped that up quite a bit. Fifty thousand in diesel and another ten thousand in gas. And we haven't got our propane bids yet either, have we? One of those come pretty quick?
Uh, I don't know and Scott got those on. I'll have to take a look.
Bumped up repairs, a hundred and eighty thousand.
Doug, that engineering line item, we've been over for the last few years.
Yes, ma'am. All of that is reimbursed though to Commissioner Mopin, but if the Commissioners are inclined to increase that.
Okay, yeah, let's have that conversation this afternoon.
Hundred and sixty-two.
Yeah, we're. We're low.
Most of that we get back.
You what?
A lot of that we get back.
How's that?
From developers and that kind of stuff.
Engineering costs?
Yeah.
I think LTAC, a lot of our stuff that we actually have engineered, Neil, we write grants for and we get it back through those grant portals.
Oh, I see, okay.
Guess the only one that kind of rubs me a little bit is the road construction paving by Valley County. We. One year we spent quite a bit. We haven't spent much this year though. But we gotta have to start chip sealing these new roads that were getting paved the last two years and I think that's. I don't see where, does that, Doug, you know, does that include the oil? The chip sealing or is that just the chips?
Mr. Chairman, I apologize. I don't know. We can have that conversation.
Well, there's crushing down below. He's only budgeted a hundred thousand for rock crushing, but he said here a while back he had. Quite a bit of stuff already crushed up there.
Yeah, we spent a lot of money last year.
We need to go through this one again with Jeff just to make sure we're on the same page, all of us.
How many budget? Five hundred thousand and we're only at three percent?
El, did this address the concerns of the Road Advisory Committee you guys met recently? Would this budget address their needs?
Yeah, they didn't seem to really want to talk much about the budget. They were more concerned about wages and, and uh, lack of help.
Okay.
And we've got those wages up as we can get them right now, hopefully. Epstein Bridge match, good there. Brian, we have an extraordinary legal fees for ten thousand in the Road Department, just so you know. And I don't know if that was for RS two four seven seven. Or costs. Just so you know, we haven't spent any of it.
Well, we have RS two four seven seven up above.
That's fresh. That's actual work though, Commissioner Mopin.
Oh, got it.
That's the dirt.
We've only done, we've only done that much on RS two four seven seven the last few years. I mean, if that's a true statement, we need to hire vendors for that backcountry stuff. Cause we're not even coming close to spending the money that's set aside.
We did have that discussion in Road Advisory and the bids came in this year at twenty-six hundred dollars a mile. Backcountry and we make about twenty-three hundred back on the gas tax. So we would have had to subsidize that about three hundred dollars a mile. Contracted out and Jeff didn't want to do that, you remember? He thought the Road Department could do that and save that money. However, I think the Road Advisory Committee is pushing us, pushing him towards doing that contract anyway and. And uh. They're back there now, starting from Yellow Pine, back towards Big Creek and Edwardsburg and out around towards Warren and. It'll probably take him a month. Get around through all that, but um, we need to kind of re-approach that again for next year. The issue is all the local guys are slammed. They don't really have the time to do it.
But if they contract out. And they take on that contract. Then they, they're the ones that are liable for it.
Yeah, the issue is we still have to send, either Jeff goes back or somebody goes back and checks their work.
Sure.
So we still have an expense to send somebody back to every day to check on that.
But I mean, if we're short with people here on the valley floor, makes sense if we have a contractor back there and one guy can go up. Make sure they're doing.
That's part of the stuff that Jeff's been doing and that's why he doesn't have the time in the offices because he's doing things like that. He did mention that they've done pretty close to three hundred approach permits. This year and he checks on all those and those are the kind of things I think this other person should be doing. Part of their job, but we're gonna talk about that this afternoon too.
So Doug, do we need that much in the RS two four seven seven, I guess, is one of my questions. He's not spending it.
I.
So if he's doing the work.
Commissioner Mopin, that was, had been made requested by your Road Director, so I am deferring to. Uh, his request to have that as thirty thousand.
Okay.
Uh, so there is a contract out with historical research associates. They are, they are working on that currently. They have, they won't send us a bill until it works. I expect another four, six weeks.
Is that by an hourly rate or is that just a general flat contract?
Well, it was broke out on an hourly rate.
Okay. I know one year we spent, I think it was twenty-four thousand hard to turny down below for. An RS two four seven seven. I think, or twenty-two thousand, I can't remember. Uh, we're about out of time. Let's move on down to the airport. Everything pretty much stays the same there. Magistrate Court. Uh, any issues there, Doug? And that budget. Actually came down from the year before about eight thousand dollars, so that's good. Probation, we've kind of talked about that. That was another one that took a pretty big jump. That was all mostly salary. Fairgrounds and buildings. This is where the seventy thousand. From the county goes and they've, they actually spent more than that, but that's all right. Just one percent. Health District, and everybody knows the story on that one. Um, and it's interesting because the Health District's doing the same thing you're doing, Doug, using. Uh, leftover cash carryover to balance their budget because they can't get staff. It's pretty hard to find an epidemiologist now. Okay, election consolidation, everybody good with that? We're gonna have a, hopefully an over, or election this fall. Maybe.
We got coming up for election this fall?
Well, we have the EMS district vote.
Are they doing, trying to do the levy this fall too?
Yeah, everything. And then there was.
I think first the public hearing will take place and then we'll hear from the general public and then the Commissioners ultimately will make a decision. If they want that on the ballot or not. We have to have that wording in by September eighteenth.
September eighteenth, okay.
Forty-eight thousand in Injunet, which I think we need to keep there for cremations and. Rental, that kind of stuff. Junior college, we're leaving at thirty thousand. And we only spent sixty-nine fifty so far this year.
Very underutilized.
Man, we need to get that out more.
We, we have, the schools have it out.
I know it. It's like there's a missed opportunity there. Revale. This is one you were talking about, Neil. This is where all the appraisers live. Doesn't look like they went over anywhere. This one went up about sixty-five thousand. You want to do solid waste, Doug?
I, I would like to get through all of them, Mr. Chairman. I don't know if.
We got a few more minutes. Shouldn't take.
I don't know if uh, the eleven fifteen matter is gonna take thirty minutes.
No.
So I think we would, we'll have some time.
I think we can go a little over.
Yep. The big one, Mr. Chairman, uh, Commissioners is on the capital expenses, capital buildings. We've budgeted three point one million. For all of the proposed projects uh, that have been presented during the Great West Engineering. Um, uh, presentation as well during the budget process. So there is approximately three point one million in expenditures for improvement for the transfer site.
When are we meeting with Lakeshore? When is that coming up? Next week?
Commissioners, Scott had asked to get it on the agenda for the fourteenth. I haven't got it on there, but I will make sure to get that on the agenda.
What was the long haul? Wow, seven hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Yeah, it was ridiculous.
That's just killing us.
Isn't that amazing?
Court?
Doug, question on solid waste really quick.
Yes, ma'am.
So Idaho County has reached back to us and they have identified a parcel where we could do a regional transfer. Um, ongoing conversation, nothing's been decided, but what would we have to do? If we had to contribute some funding in order to open a conversation around this?
It's not a transfer site, it's a landfill, isn't it?
Landfill, sorry.
Yeah. And the, the issue is the long haul from here to wherever it is versus the long haul from here to Payette.
Well, it's actually a shorter length. El, did you see Dennis's email from yesterday?
No, I haven't looked at the mileage, but the other thing that it's gonna throw in there is Whitebird Hill.
It's.
That can be a real tough road in the wintertime.
And I agree with you. It's seventy miles to the site that they're recommending. It's a hundred and two to Payette, yeah. So it's outside of Grangeville. Three miles, I think. So I'm just putting it out there that, you know, what would we need to do if this conversation moves forward?
Well, we'd have to figure out how much they're gonna need to build this and then there'd be our share of it based on tonnage. And when I looked at a few years back, it was between two and three million dollars that. We would have to come up with to help them build the, dig the hole so to speak and line it and build the actual landfill. And then we would get a break on the tipping fees until we are. We get compensated back until that two million dollars is credited back, so to speak. Does that make sense?
And I guess what I'm asking again is the process because we've already met now. Um, once as a group, the engineer is already engaged. Um, so this year we will be making a decision on whether we want to do this. So in the budgeting process, would we have to reopen a budget? In order to find funding to be able to do that?
Yes.
Yep.
Or are we budget for it right now?
Well, you don't, and we don't know what that figure's gonna be because we don't know what.
No idea.
That engineered cost, they're gonna, they'll come up, it's gonna take, let's say it takes ten million dollars to dig the hole and build the roads and. Put in the scales and all that kind of stuff. If there's five counties, if there's seven counties or eight counties, how many tons? And they'll give us a pretty close figure about what they're gonna need to uh, from us to build it. In the meantime, we're still hauling trash to. Pay at an Adams Canyon, we're still having a normal program until it's built. So to me, it's gonna be. I don't know, ARPA funds or we, we levy and we.
And I, I think a bond is being proposed out.
Yeah. That's gonna be.
So I think that, that new group, whatever that consolidated group is, we would have to have. So I think that, that new group, whatever that consolidated group is, we would have to have, it's like an LLC or incorporation. They will actually put a bond out. But I just didn't know if we wanted something in here to help pay for engineering costs or anything else this year. If we put a hundred thousand into it, you know, just for the conversations of moving forward, I, I think that would behoove us. Maybe, you know, bump up that miscellaneous expenses or, but I, I can't see the whole thing right now. But is there an engineering line, Doug?
We have a contingent, contingent expense, expense line that we've budgeted a hundred and twenty thousand.
Uh, what do you think about bumping that, Neil? You wanna bump that, you know, to? With, I, I know that there's going to be ongoing conversations this year. Dennis is working on this. We've told them we're interested.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, at least in.
I don't see.
Getting to the bottom of this, what we can do.
Is this a?
I think we bump that to two hundred or two hundred and fifty.
This is regional landfill that we've been discussing with these people about? That's what this is that we're talking about?
You know, we could bump up that contingent expense maybe another hundred thousand. I don't see an engineering, but I also don't see anything in here for, um, oh, shoot, what's it called, the hazardous waste? And we know that went up to fifty-eight thousand. Where would that be in here, Doug? Have refrigerant. But I don't see anything for hazardous waste.
Commissioners.
Right there.
Where is it?
Or expense line four or five one.
Also hazardous.
Oh, there it is. We need to bump that, that was fifty-three thousand. Wasn't it fifty-four thousand? He just got that contract for this year.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, when we were preparing his budget, he provided us with that figure. But if something's changed, we can.
Yeah, I, I think that was Dave Rich covering.
Might check that. I think that's, should be fifty-three or fifty-four thousand.
Sherry, have they already identified a site?
That's what he just sent us yesterday. Yes, he just sent, we just received an email yesterday from Dennis. I don't know if he has your email, Neil. But he said that a site has been identified that would work. And so if we're at all interested, they're gonna do some more work on it.
So we're talking four counties, five counties, working together?
No, it's more than that, I think.
Regional.
Because right now those guys ship all their trash to Missoula landfill. Clearwater, Nizpurs.
And Alteas, they've got. They've got another one in Idaho County, I think, that's just getting full. No one will give them a date certain of when they will be able to deliver trash there in the future or for how long? So.
I think we're gonna have to look at doing that.
Well, the other thing that's keeping back your mind is we're taking ninety ton a week over to Adams County. And they're hoping that they can get a high desert exemption so they don't have to line it. And then they, they could take more of our trash. But I haven't heard.
Well, they told me they're not, no, I, I've talked to them in the last month. They are not interested at all.
No?
Nope.
And take it anymore?
I think we have.
They're still gonna take our ninety ton a week, though, aren't they?
Um, so far, you know, it, is, I don't know if we have a signed contract with them or not. I don't know what our contractual obligations are, but they are not interested in being Valley County stuff. That's what they told me. I think that's very short sighted, but.
That would be the best if we could go in with them with all of it. But Mike Paradis is retired and I don't know the new guys. But I still think we need.
Darren Ward is very interested, but Joe Iverson and Vicky Purdy are absolutely not interested at all.
Not interested, huh? But I still think we should jump the contingent expense up so that we can handle any, any engineering these guys ask for.
I agree.
Even fifty thousand would help.
Yeah, I think we better do a hundred thousand. I know that that engineering plan is out there. And I can't remember what Jase told us is the next steps. But there will definitely be a regional meeting in September when we're all together to move this conversation forward.
Okay, we gotta move on. We're gonna run out of time. Let's go down to Tort and all that mainly is our liability insurance, which went up about forty thousand, forty-five thousand this year. Veterans Memorial, Doug's gonna talk with, oh, no, this is for the Legion, isn't it?
That's correct.
And that's still at eighty-five hundred. Weeds, it's all mostly salary. That one went up about forty thousand. And that was all mostly salary. Okay, now we're into pest control, and this is the mosquito stuff. And they are getting west now down in Canyon County, but so far we've been lucky up here. Waterways. Everybody good with that one?
Yeah, Commissioner Mopin had some questions regarding the projects that were going to be, uh, completed next year. And I don't know if Commissioner Thompson has the ability to present specifically what some of those are. Or we can have Sergeant Turner come in the future, Commissioner Mopin, uh, to let you know, uh, some of the projects they are planning for fiscal year twenty twenty, uh, four. As well as, uh, there is a big expenditure of a new boat that they are planning on buying a new boat next fiscal year.
And they are wanting to come in here and present to us here pretty quick. So I'm surprised they haven't got ahold of you yet. Jolly wanted to bring, uh, Sergeant Turner in and some of the members and make a presentation to us what all they're doing and what not. I'll, I'll talk to them at the next meeting, make sure they do that.
You can get that scheduled, then potentially the fourteenth.
Hey, I appreciate that. I just hate to see federal funds grow to that, that point without knowing what they're saving for.
Well, and I was wondering, too, if we could use these kind of funds if we were to buy some of these houses, these little tiny homes? Or our waterway deputies, if we could pay for it out of waterways. Do you know, Doug?
I don't.
Yes.
Probably not.
I don't know, that would be.
They have talked about it in the past. That was one of their investments was yes, they can provide housing for their patrol officers.
Well, that would be a place.
Very interested in doing that.
Okay, now the rest of it, I think, is all snowmobile. Is there any one specific thing you want to look at?
Commissioner Mopin had some questions regarding the, uh, request from Larry just to have salaries. For Smiths Ferry.
These are the groomer salaries.
Correct.
And we talked about, you said those are going up the normal six percent, right?
Sure.
So what Smiths Ferry's is wanting is like the fuel. We haven't spent any money on fuel. So I don't know if Larry's getting all that donated. But we're putting money into things like fuel. And there was some in the past, there was like equipment that was set aside that, um, the equipment and supplies were not spent. They want all their money put into salaries as much as possible. I think maybe these extraordinary expenses are now carryover funds. So I just wanted to ask Larry, you know, are we grooming enough there? Do they want to expand their grooming program? And do they have the ability to do that?
Well, the way that usually the salaries are is they kind of, um, like the supervisor split amongst all the different snowmobile districts. You can see that at the top. But we set the salaries, not the, not the clubs.
But it's number of groomers on the trails. So what, what we're doing is we're limiting their ability for growth, from what I'm hearing from that group, by not putting enough into the salary line item. So basically what we're doing is we're saying you get groomers for this much time and then you're out of money. They want more allocated to the salary line so they can have more groomers for longer.
More groomer people or more time in the groomer?
I think it's probably either one, just a capacity to grow their area, which is really a positive. Because then it takes Adam McCall and Donley. I mean, if they want to groom, groom theirs and get clear back over in, uh, um, the Boise County side, more power to them. Let's give them the ability to do it with some, you know, additional revenue there.
We know how many groomers they have down there?
They just have one in Smiths Ferry.
You only have one?
But the county provides a backhoe to plow it. Uh, the road department provides a backhoe to plow that parking lot every year. So maybe that's some of the equipment they're thinking about. But the idea at one time was to put all the money together, forty-three. And then as bills came in, then they would kind of spread it around until we got close to the end. And sometimes that worked, sometimes it didn't. So then they split it up into forty-three A, B, C, and D. So that everybody had a set budget and that's all you could spend because things got out of hand really fast.
Well, they're getting about twenty-six thousand a year. We're not expanding anywhere near that.
Larry just walked in, maybe he can help us explain that. But Sherry's saying that Smiths Ferry wants more money in their budget so they could do more grooming?
Well, they can only get what comes from registration. And their, and their budget is up over last year.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it went from eighteen-six to twenty-seven thousand, so they got a nine thousand dollar increase.
Right. And we put a couple thousand into salary and more into fuel so we can run the groomer longer. And I do have a volunteer to run it, too, this year.
Yeah, you.
So Larry?
Yes.
Um, so I noticed the last couple of years you haven't been spending any out of the fuel line. Are you getting donations for fuel instead of having to expend it?
Yeah, we got five thousand out of, uh, excuse me, we got five hundred gallons out of Gem County. That's a year-by-year deal. So I'll have, I have to have it in the budget just in case. But because it, yeah, we can move that around if we have to.
They just want, they would like to expand their program. I think that that's absolutely admirable. Let's try and get it out of McCall and Donley and back down there if we can.
I don't really think we can do that, Commissioner. That mu, that money, the monies that come in for each area are supposed to stay in those areas.
What I'm saying is, Larry, is you move the people out of other programs if you can.
Oh, we, yeah, we do, we do that. We've got the bu, we've got it broken out with time cards. Uh, when Doug came on, it was a great thing so that each one of our groomer operators has, can work in McCall, they can work in Cascade, they work in Donley, they can work down there. And, um, it gets charged to that area.
Yeah, but what I, what I'm saying is they want to expand their footprint. Let me put it that way. They'd like to expand their program, uh, more into High Valley, more into Boise County. And if they have the ability to do that, we're limiting them by only giving them eight thousand dollars worth of salary expense. Can we give them fifteen thousand and take it away, you know? I mean, what's your carryover fund? What's the ninety-one fifty?
That's what was left over at the end of the year last year.
So can we push that, take a portion of that and give them more salary, put it up to twelve thousand?
So I left, I take, I take the, the ninety-one plus what else, what else we're getting this year, and then we build the budget out of it. And this next year, not only do we have our salaried employee, but I've got a volunteer employee down there. So we should get a lot more hours of grooming. Keep in mind, we also are limited down there because of the logging situation that goes on down there. But, and DF Development, we don't have the trails that we used to have open. We're grooming what we can groom right now.
Good.
So to groom more area, you, you'd basically have to have another groomer to be able to do more area. But then you'd have to have the area to do it.
Not necessarily. We'd, yeah, we need the roads. We need, we need approval to groom in more areas. I think we're doing pretty good down there. We've added every year for the last three years mileage. I don't know what else I can really do. I know where the comments are coming from and it's just one person.
I think, Sherry, I think you're looking at that country down under the logging, that's been the issue for the last three, four years. They're logging all of Packer John and, and Stryver Creek, which goes down into Boise County. So we can't get up there. But the other issue that we need to talk about or get, start talking about is the groomer at Warm Lake. Because those people are really growing that program.
And that area, area down there, too, from year to year, uh, last two years have been really good. Three years ago, we didn't have low elevation snow. And everything around Sage Hen and that, the big area for that, we just didn't have any snow. So all, that, it's all dependent on weather.
Mm-hmm. But if you have ninety thousand left over.
Nine thousand.
What's the plan for Warm Lake? Is there, is there a grant for another groomer or what's that?
So in the CIP, oh, sorry. In the CIP, I did submit to you guys, uh, uh, to get a PB one hundred at Warm Lake. Uh, part of the match of that was the Warm Lake Club is gonna provide a shelter for it. We're gonna put it over at the Forest Service Center across the street, uh, where they have power and groom.
On Knox Ranch?
Um, no, it's not on Knox, it's at the, the workstation.
Oh, okay, before you go into paradise.
Yes, before, just before you go into paradise. That gives us complete access to the power line so that when the, uh, when the big change happens, if it happens, we, we've got access there or we have access to Johnson Creek, either one. Lot of, lot of work's gone into that project.
Yeah, I know, and Smith, or Yellow Pine wants it back really bad, too, so.
Yeah. And I'd love to do that.
Is it just money or what is it?
Well, it's, it's access again. We quit grooming at, um, Wapiti and, uh, the road's too narrow below that. And there was an agreement with the commissioners not to groom from Wapiti and the Yellow Pine. They plowed it.
So Doug, you want to stop here for now because we are out of time?
That makes sense, Mr. Chairman, then we'll, uh, continue the workshop.
So we'll pick up a bond redemption next time.
What I would propose, Mr. Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, is maybe in the afternoon, continue the workshop.
Okay.
After, uh, the.
We got time, we can work it in today?
Yep.
Okay, so we're gonna close this down and move into our next agenda item. At this time, I'm going to, uh, recess as the Board of County Commissioners and reconvene as the Board of Equalization. Um, Brian, I know you've got some stuff for us. Where's those BOE minutes? Here we are.
Mended Alizar. What we're looking at?
I'm looking for the BOE minutes. Board of County Commissioner. Board of Equalization, there we go. So we have.
This is a.
This is, we're not approving the minutes.
No, this is a new presentation from.
Okay, all right, Brian, I'll turn it over to you, sorry.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the board. Uh, this is, th, this is really just a cleanup, uh, action request. Uh, I made an error in the original Alzar School, uh, final order. Uh, it was, uh, not an error in the findings of fact or the, uh, ultimate conclusions that you made, but really in the introductory portion that incorrectly stated that Commissioner Thompson had participated in the, in the first hearing. You recall, we, we convened on May thirtieth. Uh, Commissioner Thompson was absent and excused and, uh, but did, uh, come back to second portion of that discussion. You tabled that and, uh, so the full Board of Equalization did vote, uh, on, on the final action item. So I made that change in the introductory paragraph, sent that out to you, kind of highlighted those changes so you could see it. And I, what I would like to do is if, uh, if you agree, propose this amended order with only those changes that, uh, indicate that Commissioner Thompson was absent and excused on May thirtieth and then, uh, came back on July, I believe it was.
Yeah. And just gone for the funeral, so.
Yeah. Yeah, so, uh, if, uh, if it, if it meets your expectations and you're willing to do it, uh, would, uh, recommend and request that you would approve this amended order.
So we're gonna approve the amended findings of facts and conclusions of law and order. For BOE, we don't have to state who it's for, is that correct?
Uh.
Or do you want me to?
Yeah, if you would, please.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the amended findings of facts, conclusions of law and order for the Alizar School Incorporated Property Tax Exemption Appeal. Second, and moved in second, and any more discussion? Sherry, you're good with this?
I'm good with it, yeah.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Carriage. You have something there?
Oh, good.
Mr. Mop, and I'll, I will get you, uh, get this to you so you can sign it as well uh, as soon as we can connect and with this completed. That's all I had, so thank you for your time.
Perfect, thanks.
Have you hired that other attorney yet?
We need to get a budget.
Yeah, I can't do. Well, or you got somebody on the hook.
We, uh, well, no, no, we, we're going to put it out for competitive, uh, competitive hire and, uh, see who applies and go through the normal interview processes as long as we kind of get the, the approval from you to add that to the budget, then we'll announce the position and, and see what we can, uh, see who we, who we can recruit.
Um, Brian, on the, just real quick on the deal you sent us about public hearings, I kind of took that with a light grain of salt, just to make us more of aware of some of the comments of our public hearings as far as the time limit.
Right, yeah, uh, um, really the, the discussion that I had was surrounding the, I, I guess the best way to characterize it is there's an expectation that everybody gets their full three minutes and some people who come are nervous and, and have prepared, have prepared statements that they, they kind of edit and modify and practice ahead of time and time themselves so they get their full three minutes. So that, that really was the issue. So, um, as, you know, I think that's a matter of policy for, for you as the board to set. Um, uh, you know, it's, it, it is a simple, I think it's a simple adjustment if you wanted to make it, uh, to ensure that folks feel like they get their full three minutes and they have their opportunity to, to get on the record everything that they had. I, as I kind of mentioned in, this is just for context sake, when I, when I participate in court hearings, I'm always hopeful that the court is going to interrupt me and ask questions. That gives me the opportunity to get an idea what the court's thinking. Uh, so, so it, I, I mean, it just depends on the person. Um, but, but for public hearings, both in planning and zoning and when, uh, public hearings, so you have one this afternoon, uh, folks are going to come in and they're gonna, you know, have different perspectives or different perceptions. And so if you want to kind of establish a rule that, uh, you know, the timer's on for three minutes and the, the panel will hold their questions until the three minute buzzer goes off, uh, that's your prerogative to make that.
Well, and the other thing that goes through my mind when I do a public hearing is how many people are going to testify?
Right.
You got a room full, you have to go for three minutes. If you only got two or three people, I'm not too worried about the three minute.
Sure.
You know, it just depends on the time allotted, but appreciated that.
Yeah, yeah, I think you get, uh, you know, you get some, some feedback from the community from time to time and, and, and I, and sometimes I do too, and I, I just wanted to pass that along to you for your, for your consideration for future public hearings.
Yeah, I read your deal, that was pretty good. It was, and people do, you know, we're sitting up here, all of a sudden something flips in your head about what that person's saying and you'll ask them a question.
Yeah.
You know, and it's just, that's just human nature.
Yeah, and, and, and I know how that works. If you don't ask the question when it's fresh on your mind, you may, you may forget or, uh, yep, just neglect.
Brian, two, two questions for you. First of all, I don't believe that if we are asking questions, we've ever cut somebody off with a three minutes. We've always allowed them more time because we are engaging with them. So, um, but secondly, so it would be, I, I think I know the answer to this, but I'm going to clarify it on camera. So if someone lives within the three hundred feet and we were to give them five minutes and other people that don't live within that three hundred feet only got three minutes, we can't do that, can we?
Well, no, not necessarily.
Treat everybody to say.
Yeah, I, I would, I would discourage that because the, the purpose of, the purpose of the public hearing is a little bit different than the three hundred foot rule. Three hundred foot rule in Lupa is that you, you have a statutory requirement to, to give, provide written notice because they are the ones that are the most affected by the proposed decision that's in front of you. But, uh, in addition to that, any, any property owner in the county, we're, now we're talking planning and zoning related issues, any affected person could be a property owner that, that owns property anywhere in the county could be equally affected by the person that's three hundred feet. So, so differentiating between the two could present some problems for you. And I do think you need to, uh, try to be uniform in the way that you do it.
I think what, what tickles me though is a lot of time people come up and they want to tell you their life story.
Right.
Been here since God would made dirt, you know, and by the time they're done, their three minutes is up.
It, it's, it, it can be, it can be difficult to hone your message in, standing, standing on this side of the podium and, and be able to communicate, uh, communicate information that would be effective or, or valuable to the board for their consideration. I, I understand the challenges that presents and you do get some, some interesting stories that oftentimes don't relate to, uh, the issue in front of you.
Well, and then there's some times that, you know, the little old lady that drove all the way down here, that's lived here forever, that I'm going to give her a little more time because she's a little slower speaking and it's, it's, there's so many variables on that, but.
The, 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 the importance that I want to emphasize when we talk about public hearing and creating a record is, is, you know, strictly from a legal perspective is you're creating a record to, to bait, you know, that's going to be the basis for your decision. So one, you, you want to have everybody that is interested and affected by the decision to have an equal opportunity to tell you how they were affected. And two, you need to remember that rely on, you know, primarily, uh, the statute that you're governed by, but also the comprehensive plan if we're talking about planning and zoning related issues. And certainly as people come up and testify as citizens, uh, that's, that's an important part of the record. But as you deliberate and ultimately make a decision, you want to use the information that was put in the record as the basis for your decision. That's, and that's the importance of, uh, the public hearing process. So you, as you say, as I think as you point out, you have, uh, you have citizens who've lived here for a long time, have a lot of, a lot of history and a lot of perspective and context in terms of, of how, you know, certain things affect, uh, long-term residents and, and maybe you put a little more weight in those, in those, uh, in that information or testimony, and I certainly understand that.
Well, and I don't want to give anybody more time because they've been here forever, but I think we, you can kind of tell when somebody starts repeating themselves and, okay, you know, you're past your time, we've heard this before, then you have to shut them down, but.
Yeah.
As a chairman, you need a little flexibility on those things because I don't want to be a, I want to stop that democracy process.
The, the, the whole purpose of having a time limit for, for people who are presenting is so that you can, you can get through your agenda and, and not spend three or four, five or six hours and then have to table it, reconvene and come back another day. And so you have to kind of read the room and determine.
Right.
Based on how many people are here, uh, how flexible you can be and.
You know, we get into these EMS public hearings down the road that are in the evenings.
Right.
I think this room's going to be pretty full.
Yeah.
And we're going to have to say, we're going to have to limit you to three minutes so everybody has a chance, but.
And, and I, for, you know, I think it, for, for your consideration, uh, if, if you're inclined to, to allow some flexibility, it's always good to announce that in the beginning. So, so everybody knows and, and you can, uh, you, you can explain it and basically it, it, it goes along the lines of trying to treat everybody the same. So if you announce is, is we don't have a whole bunch of people here tonight, we're going to provide a little bit of additional flexibility, you know, if you, we'd like to keep it within three minutes, but if you go four and a half, that's fine. Once you start hitting six or seven, you may get gobbled down by the chair. Uh, but if you can announce that upfront, uh, but if this, you know, if you're lined up out the front door.
I can't do that.
Then you say, all right, okay, three minutes and we're cutting you off at three minutes. And then everybody has the exact same opportunity as the person in front of them and the person behind.
And it's so hard to say, eh, your time's up, you got to stop mid-sentence, but you have to do it.
I, I, no, it's, uh, it's a little uncomfortable and feels rude.
Feels rude, very rude, my mom would.
You do a, you do a good job, El, we appreciate you.
Okay, we're going to move on down to our last agenda item for the morning. This is an action item, this is a variance hearing for condition of use permit twenty-three dash twenty-four FedEx Hub variance. At this time, I will open up the public hearing.
Public hearing.
Do we have to come out of BOE?
It's not a public hearing? So I don't need all this stuff? For variance?
El, do we have to come out of BOE?
Oh, yeah, and Doug, we're out of BOE at, at eleven fifty-three, go back and reconvene as commissioners. So Cindy, at this time, I'll turn it over to you if it's not a public hearing.
Steve was going to show up.
Hey, Steve.
Morning.
So this is not a public hearing, it's an agenda item for the variance portion of the conditional use permit. It was a unanimous recommendation for the variance, so it just comes to you for an agenda item.
And you sent us a motion.
I sent you a staff report with all of the backup information. And I can. Staff report. It's CUP twenty-three dash twenty-four FedEx Hub variance. Property located at thirteen eight seventy-three, highway fifty-five. Planning and zoning commission unanimously approved the conditional use permit, recommended approval of the variance on July thirteen twenty-three. The agenda item is to approve the variance as follows. Variance from the hundred-foot setback from highway fifty-five is requested to allow parking of a trailer that's eighty feet from the property line and two existing vehicle parking spaces. FedEx ground package systems received approval of the conditional use permit for a package handling operation in existing twenty, two thousand five hundred and twenty square foot commercial building. Building was constructed in two thousand three. FedEx currently employs ten to twenty people at the site with a slight increase for the holiday seasons. Customers can drop off and pick up packages of the building. Location is within the Lakeport Village as identified in the Valley County Comprehensive Plan, which states commercial and industrial uses may be allowed within villages and locations found to be compatible with nearby uses and with the existing village character. Existing individual well and septic system access will be from an existing shared driveway from highway fifty-five, additional landscaping will be added. Um, on July thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, in a properly known as public hearing, the planning and zoning commission unanimously recommended approval of a variance for CUP twenty-three, twenty-four FedEx Hub. Received a, a couple of agency comments. One is from Mike Reno and it stated there's no record of the septic system serving the site. There's a septic system that serves thirteen eight seventy-one, highway fifty-five, uh, that was approved in nineteen ninety-three. The applicant will need to submit accessory use application and provide information for the proposed usage disposal. That's a condition of approval for the conditional use permit. Today, we're only looking at variance items. I am.
Cindy, can I interrupt, but was, will you please grab a microphone and put it on the table?
Oh, shoot.
Yeah, I'll bring you one.
You're cutting in.
For some reason, I thought this one word.
You got to get that.
Sorry, it, it does, it just cuts in and out really bad.
I'm sorry.
My brain's too COVID laden, I can't, I can't track. Thanks, El, I appreciate that.
There you go.
Thank you.
Well, you're extra special. That just went right out of my hand.
Got to be one of those days.
That was weird. I felt like I was maybe.
Houston, are you still there, Houston?
I'm very thankful El didn't fall.
Well, I'm, I'm just glad that maybe I'm not supposed to make that comment then.
There we go.
You're extra special nice with COVID.
Might be true.
She didn't fall down like, uh, like, did I say that? I'm sorry.
It's okay.
So the conclusions are it's in harmony with the general purpose of Valley County ordinances, meets the requirements of the state of Idaho. Um, we have, we don't have the traditional zoning, but the multiple use concept, it's in a mixed use zone, it's compatible with surrounding land uses, it's consistent with a comprehensive plan. The landscaping will improve a screening of the property. Um, and the logistics of operation necessitate placement of the trailer within the hundred-foot setback from the highway. The public does not use the site often, so customer parking within the hundred-foot setback from highway fifty-five will not be impacting.
So Cindy, the variance is for that semi-trailer that's backed up to the front door of the building?
Yes. It's for that trailer and then the, just a couple parking spots that are, um, used once in a while. The employees park behind the building and they're going to put in some landscaping kind of in that northeast corner to, to better screen it.
From the, coming from the north, that was my thing. And Steve, you're going to help him plan all that and do all that? That's really great.
Absolutely.
Awesome.
Bring your skidster over and you're going to build a berm for them and.
Get that shovel out. Nothing like digging a hole in August up here.
So there's a, a recommended motion.
Got it, I'm ready to go when you are. Any more questions for Cindy? Everybody good with this?
Yep.
So I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the variance for CUP twenty-three, twenty-four FedEx Hub as per the planning and zoning commission's recommendations to allow variance from the setback from highway fifty-five for parking of a trailer eighty feet from the property line and for two customer parking spaces along with a list of conditions of approval and to adopt their facts and conclusions as our own.
Second.
Who didn't second it? Any more discussion? Steve, you want to say something here?
Of course I need to.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 I'm curious.
Thank you.
Okay, so at this time, we are done for our morning agenda, we are going to recess and we'll see everyone back here one o'clock.
And Commissioner Mop, and I was just going to leave this meeting and then your team's meeting and then join again later.
Okay, that works.
Anything I need to sign?
Have a nice lunch without me.
I just do a letter.
Well, get, take care of yourself, get better.
Yeah, take all the meds.
Since it was a CUP, there's a, uh.
Thanks for you to sign.
I did the CUP.
Hey, I'm going to leave.
Permit, variance, it's, it'll just be part of the record.